It's seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome everyone here to the City of Menifee Planning Commission Regular Meeting for January 14, 2015. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Phillips. Commissioner Thomas.
Present.
Commissioner Sobek.
Here.
And Acting Chair Matelko.
Here.
Thank you.
Could we all rise for the flag salute, please? Place your hands over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any agenda approval or modifications?
The agenda is approved as posted, sir.
Thank you. Any presentations?
No, sir.
Okay. That'll take us to item 6.1, the approval of the meeting minutes. Are there any changes or modifications? Then is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
And a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, that's approved. That takes us to item number seven, reorganization. 7.1, privilege of the floor for extending to outgoing planning commissioner. And that would be me.
Yes, it would.
What I'd like to say is I would like to thank Councilman Tom Furman for the opportunity to have served along with him, representing and being a voice for the rural community and the City of Menifee. There are many issues still ahead as far as many in districts who are concerned. The rural community will continue to stand strong and united. I'd also like to thank all the members of the public that came out to speak in favor and in opposition to different projects that were before the planning commission. I, for one, was glad to hear people in favor and against, so I want to hear everyone's opinion. I want to thank all the planning commissioners. I want to thank staff. And I also like to do a special thanks to Katie Manier, since Katie has been faithful to attend every city council meeting and planning commission meeting from as far back as I can remember. Katie, I, like many of you, share your concerns regarding the dumping of toxic sludge throughout our city for decades. Many people with cancer, thyroid, and other serious health issues have been concerned that their homes may have been built on contaminated land. It bothers me that this council and staff have not addressed these concerns to your satisfaction and others who have asked for their assistance. The health and safety of the residents of Menifee should be job number one. Thank you, Katie, for being a voice in this community. Thank you. And with that... With that, that takes a 7.2, comments to the outgoing commissioner.
First of all, I have public comments, sir, but I wanted to offer an opportunity for any of you that had anything to say to Commissioner Matelko at this time first, and then I would call the public commenter.
I'd like to say one thing. I really, really learned a lot about the city from you, and I really appreciate your help and your advice. And hopefully, we can meet again and just talk maybe over a beer or something when they put the new beer place in. But I do appreciate your professionalism, your demeanor, and I found myself agreeing with a lot of the issues that you brought up, and I look forward to working with you or seeing you again.
Thank you.
I'll just mirror that. I especially appreciate your support of the rural area. We've had to fight to protect the rural component of our city, and it was nice to know that you're always over there to support that vote. And you always vote with your conscience, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you for welcoming me as your partner and sitting here on the dais and for your time that you put in over the last five years as a planning commissioner for our city. I don't know if a lot of you know in the audience that it's pretty much a volunteer position that we do, and he always came prepared. You stood aside so I could see the flags, the flag, to do the flag salute. I want to thank you for that. But I just want to thank you for your volunteer service that you've put here in your heart in the city. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate all your comments, and...
I think we'll take a break if that meets with your approval, Mr. Chair.
Yes, it does.
And make a few changes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. There's recess, and there's cookies in the lobby.
There we go.
This will be a five-minute recess?
Yes. I'm sorry. Yes, this will be a five-minute recess.
Truly, I really want to thank you.
And don't let anyone push...
Mr. Matelko, Chairman Matelko, I made a big, huge mistake. I sat and told you you had a public speaker that wished to address you and forgot. May I please have your permission to not call that recess just yet and call up the public speaker?
Permission granted.
Thank you, and I apologize 100 times. Katie Manier, I am so sorry, Katie.
Once you can do it, but twice I don't know, Katie. Slime, come on here. Well, tonight, I want to say, Mr. Matelko, thank you for your service. Everything you did was professional and incredible, and I appreciate you, and I am hoping, as a citizen now, that you will speak from this side. Maybe at some point, somebody will listen to what you have to say. Next, I look forward to having new planning commissioners, new voices, new ears, new people to listen and assess. And from the word in the city, these people were pretty much appointed by Scott Mann, so we know how far we'll get with this. We have another renter sitting on the planning commission instead of a homeowner, so he has no vested interest in this city as our mayor doesn't. And it's going to run the same way it runs, so I do hope, Mark, that you will keep speaking up, speak up for the people, because we have people sick. Last city council meeting, our mayor addressed the fact that he made a very sick little boy honorary mayor for a day. How noble of him, when we have flyers at stores in town with sick kids, sick, sick kids, asking for money for help, for support, and nobody knows how many sick kids there are in this city because we don't have a health department, we don't have anybody that answers or anybody for anybody to go to for help. We had a prominent doctor in town speak up one time about it. Chamber of Commerce paid him a visit and shut him up, and he won't talk to anybody about it again. So we need to do something. We need to see that these kids are not sick and suffering and going through this horrible ordeal that so many of them are going through. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Katie. Anyone else? And with that, we'll take a recess.
New Commissioners, at this point in time, the procedure would be that someone would offer up a motion to put into nomination a commissioner to act as chair for tonight's Procedurally, it's the second meeting in January where the year's seats are selected, the chair and vice chair. So whomever you choose to run, conduct the meeting tonight will only be for tonight. That doesn't exclude that individual from being elected at the next meeting, but technically, it's only for tonight, and then new decisions will be made on January 28th. With that, I ask if there's any motion for a nominee for the chair position?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Commissioner Thomas.
Is there a second?
I'd like to second that.
We'll do a roll call. Pardon me, we'll do a roll call vote very briefly, even though I believe it's not needed in this case. Commissioner Folsom? Commissioner Sobek? Commissioner Thomas? Commissioner Phillips? And Commissioner Carwin? Thank you. Could we do a quick rearrange? Well, we don't have to.
Congratulations, you all.
With that, Commissioner Thomas, if you'd take over the meeting.
Thank you. And thank you for your support for one meeting, everybody. We do have one extra item, which I think it's not on the agenda, but I think it's still legal, Charles, is we have a little gift for the incoming commissioners. Go ahead and describe it if you could.
Well, we have here a little survival kit for each of you. And in the survival kit, you will find Kleenex, there's no crying on the dais, okay? You'll find Tums, you might need those at times, and some aspirin. There's sticky notes and a highlighter, and there's Snickers. There's no snickering on the dais either. And there's Whoppers, because sometimes we have just a Whopper of a notebook and a Whopper of a meeting. And popcorn for that late night reading and studying, and of course, a notepad. So for each of you, there's a little survival kit.
This was the genius of Lisa, so she's the thoughtful one on the commission, so hopefully you won't need the Tums too early from now.
Do I need to declare the value of my gift?
I think it came from the 99 cent store, so no. Now, okay, so that brings us to the consent, uh, public comments. We already satisfied that, or?
No, we are open for public comments. I have no speaker slips except for the items, so there's no comments on non-agendized items.
Okay. That brings us to item nine, the Consent Calendar. There's no items on there. So item number 10.1, the public hearing for the specific plan amendment 2012-15 for the Menifee Lakes Plaza has this, let's see, do we have a, well, okay, I'm not sure about this.
That's okay. I'll take that one. This is a continued public hearing that has been legally noticed. There are items of correspondence that have come in that we've placed in front of you, hopefully in some sort of order. So you do have items of correspondence about tonight's hearing, and this is still a legally published hearing.
Still legally published, okay.
It's an open public hearing.
Open public hearing. Are we going to have another staff report, or?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, if you would allow, we will have Russell Brady give a staff report on this item. Following Mr. Brady's comments, we will have comments from the deputy city attorney, and then you can step into asking staff questions and so forth.
Thank you, Russell Brady, presenting on behalf of staff. Item number 10.1, I have to excuse me, getting over a little bit of a cold. Item number 10.1, consisting of plot plan 2014-113, specific plan amendment 2012-115, and changes on 2014-206. This item was previously heard at the planning commission's October 8th, November, and December planning commission hearings. Here's one of the location of the site, easterly of I-215, northerly of Newport, and westerly of Antelope. Project site existing zoning is specific plan 158, planning area 1-1. Surrounding zoning includes the same specific plan 158, various plan areas during a consistent of one-family, two-family, and multifamily dwellings and commercial zoning destinations. Current land use on the site is vacant. Surrounding land uses include single-family residential to the east and north and to the south commercial. The plot plan proposes a revision to the previously approved Menifee Lakes Plaza project to add the LA Fitness Gym primarily. Specifically, the changes to the site plan include the following: eliminate pad 1, pad 2, pad 3, and pad 4, and replace with a 34,500 square foot LA Fitness Building with an additional 3,500 square foot mezzanine. Revised the references from paths to out parcels. Modified the parking area as well as some of the drive aisles around the proposed LA Fitness area. Modify the driveway across from Balsa Road, and modify the driveway between Balsa and Major 1s, 2, and 3 are all increased in size from around...
looking forward to working with all the planning commission. And I want to thank my wife in advance for all the time that apparently this is going to be taking. I appreciate all of you coming out for this meeting tonight, and I look forward to seeing you many times. Thank you.
I'm up. Well, again, my name is Robert Carwin. I want to thank Councilman Denver for appointing me to this commission. I don't take that lightly. For those of you who don't know me, I've spoken at some city council meetings. I'm a resident of Menifee since 2001. My children go to public school here. I run a business here that I founded in the city of Menifee. I'm part of the city of Menifee. In case you don't know, the way I found out about this job was on a posting from Menifee 24/7 on the Internet. I saw that the vacancy was open, and I applied. And I'm thankful to have been appointed by Councilman Denver, and I hope to honor his appointment to me by serving this community with my own mind and with my own beliefs and convictions and representing all parts of the community. I live in a hybrid area. I'm over by La Lidera Park, so I'm familiar with the rural folks up there. My children go to school up there. I'm familiar with that area, and I'm familiar with down here. And I look forward to taking that balance of my experience into this commission and serving this community as best I can. So, thank you all, and thank you.
Thank you, new commissioners. At this point in time, the procedure would be that someone would offer up a motion to put into nomination a commissioner to act as chair for tonight's meeting only. Procedurally, it's the second meeting in January where the year's seats are selected, the chair and vice chair. So whomever you choose to run, conduct the meeting tonight will only be for tonight. That doesn't exclude that individual from being elected at the next meeting, but technically, it's only for tonight, and then new decisions will be made on January 28th. With that, I ask if there's any motion for a nominee for the chair position?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Commissioner Thomas.
Is there a second?
I'd like to second that. We'll do a roll call. Pardon me, we'll do a roll call vote very briefly, even though I believe it's not needed in this case. Sorry, Commissioner Folsom?
Yes.
Commissioner Sobek?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
And Commissioner Carwin?
Yes.
Thank you. Could we do a quick re-rea-? Well, we don't have to.
Congratulations, Wauro.
With that, Commissioner Thomas, if you'd take over the meeting.
Thank you. And thank you for your support for one meeting, everybody. We do have one extra item, which I think, it's not on the agenda, but I think it's still legal, Charles, is we have a little gift for the incoming commissioners. Go ahead, you describe it, if you could.
Okay. Well, we have here a little survival kit for each of you. And in the survival kit, you will find Kleenex. There's no crying on the dais. Okay? You'll find Tums. You might need those at times. And some aspirin. There's sticky notes and a highlighter. And there's Snickers. There's no snickering on the dais either. And there's Whoppers, because sometimes we have just a Whopper of a notebook and a Whopper of a meeting. And popcorn for that late night reading and studying. And of course, a notepad. So, for each of you, there's a little survival kit.
Thank you. This was the genius of Lisa, so she's the thoughtful one on the commission. Hopefully, you won't need the Tums too early from now.
Do I need to declare the value of my gift?
I think it came from the 99 cent store, so no. Okay, so that brings us to the consent, uh, public comments. We already satisfied that, or?
No, we are open for public comments. I have no speaker slips except for the items, so there's no comments on non-agendized items.
Okay. That brings us to item nine, the Consent Calendar. There's no items on there. So, item number 10.1, the public hearing for the specific plan amendment 2012-15 for the Menifee Lakes Plaza has this, let's see. Do we have a? Well, okay, I'm not sure about this.
That's okay, I'll take that one. This is a continued public hearing that has been legally noticed. There are items of correspondence that have come in that we've placed in front of you, hopefully, in some sort of order. So you do have items of correspondence about tonight's hearing, and this is still a legally published hearing.
Still legally published, okay.
It's an open public hearing.
Open public hearing. Are we going to have another staff report?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, if you would allow, we will have Russell Brady give a staff report on this item. Following Mr. Brady's comments, we will have comments from the city, Deputy City Attorney, and then you can step into asking staff questions and so forth.
Thank you, Russell Brady, presenting on behalf of staff. Item number 10.1. I have to excuse me, getting over a little bit of a cold. Item number 10.1, consisting of plot plan 2014-113, specific plan amendment 2012-115, and change zone 2014-206. This item was previously heard at the planning commission's October 8th, November, and December Planning Commission hearings. Here's showing the location of the site, easterly of I-215, northerly of Newport, and westerly of Antelope. Project site existing zoning is specific plan 158, planning area 1-1. Surrounding zoning includes the same specific plan 158, various planning areas generally consisting of one-family, two-family, and multifamily dwellings and commercial zoning destinations. Current land use on the site is vacant. Surrounding land uses include single-family residential to the east and north and to the south commercial. The plot plan proposes a revision to the previously approved Menifee Lakes Plaza project to add an LA Fitness gym primarily. Specifically, the changes to the site plan include the following. Eliminate pad 1, pad 2, pad 3, and pad 4, and replace with a 34,500-square-foot LA Fitness building with an additional 3,500-square-foot mezzanine. Revice the references from paths to out parcels. Modify the parking area as well as some of the drive-ais around the proposed LA Fitness area. Modify the driveway across from Balsa Road and modify the driveway between Balsa and Pompous. Major 1s, 2, and 3 are all increased in size from around 1,000 to 3,000 or 4,000 square feet each. The number of parking spaces has been increased from 787 to 843. Approximately 775 parking spaces would be required as a minimum per the specific plan amendment being proposed. The total building square footage is proposed to be increased from 171, 817 square feet to 184, 717 square feet. And then lastly, convert pad 5 to out parcel 1 in name. The specific plan amendment proposes the change of zoning ordinance text of the specific plan, in particular, for plan area 1-1, which would allow the gym use to allow the LA Fitness, as well as modify the zoning ordinance to add and delete certain allowed uses for plan area 1-1. Change the life of a conditional use permit to be extended from one year to five years, and the life of a plot plan extended from two years to five years. It would also propose to modify the parking area design standards for the specific plan, planning area 1-1, as well as modify the parking rate for general retail shopping center. Typical rate is 5.5 spaces per 1,000 square feet, and the specific plan amendment would change that to five spaces per 1,000 square feet. Here showing the current approved site plan for Menifee Lakes Plaza. Highlighted in orange there would be the buildings proposed to be removed or originally proposed to be removed. What the revised site plan would now include pad 1 or out parcel 1. Here are the previous revised site plan showing the LA Fitness location closer to Antelope Road. And here are the current revised site plan which shifts LA Fitness closer I-215. And then, instead of out parcel 1, located next to major 1, it now basically re- it includes the previous pad 5 closer to Antelope Road with a smaller square footage. As noted, currently, the zoning code requires 5.5 spaces per 1,000 square feet. The project proposes to modify that for the current, the site plan area. Again, the proposed requirement results in 808 parking spaces required compared to 844, which would be required under the 5.5 rate. The project provides a total of 843 parking spaces. The project did include a parking analysis, which indicated a maximum of 710 parking spaces would be needed to serve the project. And that was also to- the project is previously designed, part of the latest revision, which actually decreased the square footage based on the pad 1 or out parcel 1, as well as a condition has been included prior to building permit issuance for a parking analysis to be provided based on the specific uses to guarantee that sufficient parking will be provided on the site. Regarding the parking lot design standards, one item is eliminating the requirement for bumpers or wheel stops, since that's seen as both a maintenance issue and a trip hazard issue, as well as modifying the requirement for end parking stalls adjacent to planters. Instead of having a 6-inch and 12-inch step-out would now either require a 6-inch curb and 6-inch step-out or a monolithic 12-inch curb. Again, the curb and step-out is viewed as being basically excessive in addition to the additional two feet that's required for end stalls. Here just showing an example of what an 18-inch total step-out would look like. The LA Fitness elevations have been revised from the previous planning commission hearing in part to respond to the revised location closer I-215. Looking at that revision in particular is the rear elevation, which includes some additional architectural features that kind of pop out from the face. To note, there is the graphic in there, which we've spoken with the applicant about, not including on the design. In addition, the elevations currently do not complete the tower or crown architectural feature of the LA Fitness building. Instead, it would be left open. It is treated or painted along the interior of it, but it does not complete the full circle around the back part of that. That portion of the building would likely be viewed from I-215 as traffic is coming south on 215, as they would see kind of down onto the top of the building and the rear of the building and this tower feature. Here showing the previous hotel elevations under the current approval and the revised hotel elevations to comply with the 45-foot maximum height. Previous planning commission hearings were his comments regarding the gas canopy. Those have been revised to include some additional roof feature to them. And here the conceptual corner monument design at the intersection of Antelope and Newport Road. Since the prior planning commission here, we've also included additional text to condition 47 regarding the outdoor seating, just so that it provides earlier guarantee that the outdoor seating is provided basically around a 50% square footage when the shopping center is at approximately 50% built. So with that, we would just make sure that it's not being dumped on one of the last buildings or tenants to come into the center, that it's being addressed earlier in the process. Another revision included is revision to the pylon signs located along I-215 as well as Newport Road. This showing the, on the left, the existing or prior design. Again, the max height is not changing. The service area of the total sign structure is not changing. It would simply be including two additional smaller tenant panels on that and reducing the arch feature of the sign structure. So this is the 215 sign, and then this is the Newport Road sign. And as an example, as requested by the planning commission, some sample of, some pictures of hotels in the nearby area, in particular, the Temecula area. These were just simply pulled off of Google Earth. Here showing the quality in Temecula, three stories with 73 rooms. Fairfield then with three stories and 94 rooms. And Extended Stay with three stories and 107 rooms. And Embassy Suites, the Embassy Suites, which was one of the few that we found at four stories with 176 rooms. Staff recommends planning commission adopt resolution 15198 recommending city council adopt an addendum to environmental assessment number 40567, as well as adopt resolution recommending city council approve of the specific plan amendment and the change zone as well as the plot plan. This concludes staff's presentation.
Staff would also like to point out two different things. One, the references to the hotel. The specific plan allows a hotel at 45 feet in height. The application before you tonight does not specifically include the hotel that will be built. Your conditions of approval and the understanding is that when the applicant for this project has a tenant lined up for that hotel, at that point in time, that particular design will be submitted to you, and it will be at that point in time that the commission gets to determine the architecture of the building and whether or not that architecture supports or does not support a three, two, three, or four-story building. It's the 45-foot height limit that is in the specific plan that remains in the specific plan. Second, there's a procedural issue. As we have two new seated commissioners, and this item is continued from previous meetings, we need to have the commissioners identify, the two new commissioners identify whether or not they have had the opportunity to review all of the records from the previous meetings on this item. If you have not reviewed all of the previous meetings on this item, then although you may participate in the discussion, you may ask questions of staff, the applicant, the public, and so forth, you are not encouraged, you are discouraged from voting on any motion that may be presented by the other commissioners. With that, are there any commissioners? Either the two new commissioners would like to comment on their review of the past review of this item.
I did review the videos from three different council meetings. So as long as there were three meetings in December, November, and October, I reviewed them.
Then you can participate in the vote.
Commission.
I have reviewed the materials for tonight. I reviewed the entire packet and the plot plans, but I did not have the opportunity. I was informed just this morning about the necessity to review those meetings. So between then and tonight, I have not had the opportunity, so I'm going to have to abstain from the vote tonight.
Thank you very much for that disclosure. In addition to that, we would like to turn over some time to the city attorney to make some comments on plot plans.
I just had a brief comment for the commission, and it's sort of come up a little bit in some of the prior public hearings. I just want to emphasize that the commission's role is that of a land use regulator. And so, in that role, the commission makes sure that the specific projects and proposals are consistent with the general plan, and if necessary, any specific plan zoning ordinance, and as part of your findings that it's in furtherance of the public health, safety, and welfare. So while the commission regulates land uses, it doesn't regulate land users. And I know that's been brought up at times during the public hearing that certain shops should go in, certain restaurants should go in, things like that. But we don't actually regulate the land users themselves. So that's just a friendly reminder for the commission and the public.
With that, the chair may open for public comments.
The public hearing is still open, so do we want to have the applicant speak before that? Or after?
I made a mistake. You can, the commission can ask staff questions now. Then, the open public hearing, you will ask the applicant to come up and make comments, and then have speakers.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions? Not, not comment, not opinion? That there will be time for that at the end, but this is simply technical questions of staff.
I do have one. Even though I can't vote, I think it might be educational. I've not had a chance to review the entire law regarding this place, but the size of the parking spaces. Is the size of the parking spaces dictated in any kind of law or just the amount of parking spaces?
The sizes of the parking spaces are dictated through the specific plan and through the city's development code. And it is, the size is consistent throughout the city.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. I'd like you to explain a little bit more about the step-out. I know I've asked you questions, but I'd like it made a little clearer. Russell.
Can I pull up that exhibit just to kind of more easily demonstrate?
Yes.
So the picture shown here is, my understanding, the term is monolithic 18-inch curb. The stall you see next to it is an end stall. And so, per our standards, our dimension requirements for an end stall require an additional two feet. So that stall is an 11-foot wide stall. And then you have this 18-inch curb basically as a step-out. So you have quite a bit of area for the vehicle to park and step out onto the asphalt, onto the pavement, rather than onto the curb. And so there's not so much of a need to have such a large curb to step out onto. And what they're asking for is a 12-inch total curb basically there, rather than the 18 as our code typically requires.
Okay. Right. And is this consistent with the other shopping centers around town?
I've not necessarily gone out to each of the shopping centers and figured out. It's possible in the past, some shopping centers have not been built exactly to the code standards. I'm not aware of which ones may, which ones may not, though.
I can offer some comment on that, however. As you are aware, this is the eighth city I've worked for. The other seven cities have been in the county of Los Angeles or the county of San Bernardino. This city is the only city I've ever had that had anything other than a 6-inch curb, let alone a 12-inch that's being asked for.
I just note from my experience being a lady wearing high heels, I always step out onto that needed area of the 18 inches. Is that what it is out here in this parking lot? Because I paid attention to that tonight when I got out or when I went around to my car on the other side. Are we aware? Is it 18 inches or is it 12?
I'm honestly not sure what the curbs out in our parking lot.
I'm just trying to visualize in that parking lot as being a regional shopping center making it. Just trying to make the best decision on that. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner?
I've got a couple of questions. The Balsa Road entrance was a matter of issue prior, but I guess that was before LA Fitness was moved over here. But it looks like there may be a stop area that wasn't delineated in this plan As you're going to the north, I guess, out of the parking lot, just before you get into that?
That parking, that driveway.
Right there. Shouldn't there be a stop sign there?
Oh, there may be a stop sign. The internal circulation there will be determined by the city engineer when it's built. And it would be anticipated that a stop would be located there.
I saw stop signs and it looks like that should be.
It simply looks like a typo off the sheet.
I also had a question regarding, I'm assuming that over in the, in front of the gas canopy, that's a gas tanker?
Yes, that's an illustration of a gas tanker to illustrate that one will fit. Yes.
Because it looks to me like that's blocking the right turn-in, as well as the exit area?
There's sufficient circulation on-site for the temporary time that that vehicle would be offloading, that it would not interfere with the use of the site.
Okay. And then I had a question regarding gross square footage versus net usable area? The lube center on the plans, it's 1,475 square feet, and then net usable is 400? Can you explain how that's calculated?
I have to pull up the floor plans just to verify exactly as far as the lube center, how that area is calculated. That's something I can look at.
Okay, I just.
We can have the applicant answer that particular question.
Okay. There was a, it shows compact stall, the dimensions for that. Are there any compact stalls that will be used in this center?
Do we want to go ahead and have the applicant, he might be able to answer some of these while we're. Go ahead, can the applicant come up and help assist, if you know the answers, in conformity with Russell?
My name is Lou Maramontis, I'm president of Muirfield Properties. To my knowledge, there are no compact stalls on the site. With reference to the lube center.
Do we have the microphone on over there?
With reference to the lube center, I'm not going to build that. One of my partners is going to build it. Unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that question. I just don't know. Ron, do you know? Ron's the architect, maybe he can answer it.
Thanks, Lou. Ron Underwood, Laguna Niguel, California. You caught a typo, that should say 1,400.
Okay, so then the parking would change?
Yes, another five stalls.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions for staff?
Yes, I have one question for the, with regards to the LA Fitness Center. This diagram shows that this, the crown of this building is going to be open to view on the west side. I'm wondering, what was the logic behind leaving that open, like that where it's going to be viewed from the freeway? Is there a reason for that?
It's simply a cost issue, but we can close that if the determination is made that it needs to be closed. We didn't think it would be visible when you're down at that level. At eye level, if you're viewing it coming down, which you may do coming from the freeway, it may make sense to close it off, and that can be done.
Okay, I would recommend that you close that off, because it's going to be seen when you go on to 215 North. And you can look over and you can see that.
Understand.
I would just recommend that you throw a few bucks at putting something in there. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
No?
No?
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. You now have the opportunity for the applicant to make any formal statements that they would like, keeping the public hearing open, then public comment before you close.
Good evening, Commissioners, James Bach, Marketing Development Management Group. I'm here representing the owner of Menifee Lakes Plaza. Congratulations, Commissioners, on being appointed to the commission. Thank you, Russell, for a good presentation. We were last here in October, and we heard and listened to all kinds of comments from both the public and from the commissioners. And we went back, we worked really hard to try and come up with a solution that would work, that we felt that you guys would accept, and hopefully approve this evening. Here it is. We are here to answer any questions. The whole entire development team is here, the owner of the shopping center is here, we have a representative from LA Fitness here, we have our architect here, and we have our traffic engineer here. So for now, we will sit back and listen to the comments. And as we go along, I'll look a little bit further into the parking, with the lube center, the question that you had asked, and about the difference between the 400 square feet and the 1,400 square feet. I'm not sure that it needs any extra parking. It may actually have to do with, you know, the office space within the lube center is counted as the parking ratio, and not the whole entire service center itself, because you're basically just having vehicle bays in the rest of the lube center. Whereas the lube center itself is a whole 1,400 square feet, the office is only 400. I think that may be the discrepancy you're seeing, but we want to look at it and try and get the right answer, because the extra parking spaces are a little hardened in that particular site. And with that, we'll listen to the public comment. Thank you. Sure.
Before you sit down, do you want to go ahead and make comment and submit this?
We can, if you would like. I could have the architect come up and do that. Ron, would you like to come up and share those with us?
Why don't you describe what this is and why you're doing it?
And can you repeat your name? I'm sorry, I'm new at this.
Ron Underwood. Ron Underwood.
It's new, you don't have it. They just submitted it. And just so the public knows, we had a meeting before this, and certain improvements were suggested, and that's what he'll be addressing.
Clarify who had the meeting?
Myself.
Thank you.
With staff present.
And as a follow-up to previous meetings, where we were asked to provide a more substantial public gathering area for outdoor dining and seating, we've got two different versions that we would consider, depending on who the ultimate tenants end up being for these pad locations. We don't have tenants specified yet, however, we know that once we get going with the big tenants, the LA Fitness, and whatever else comes in the back, that we'll get a lot of interest, probably from food users. So one alternative that we have would be to put the approximately 60-by-60 seating area, it's about 3,500 square feet, which would represent a bulk of the amount of square footage that the commission is looking for, adjacent to out parcel three. The other option would be to have it slid over slightly and adjacent to out parcel four. In either case, the plaza would be partially framed by the wall of the building, and by the berm along the right-of-way landscaping. And there would be ample amount of seating opportunity with landscape interspersed and decorative paving.
So that will be, you're submitting that and agreeing to that as a condition of approval, correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And you'll submit these to Kathy or Charles?
To Russell.
Oh, to Russell.
And so that we're clear, this is something that when they develop the project, depending upon which, what the need is for the two buildings that are adjacent to these, one or the other of these will be built, not both.
And in addition to this, because the requirement's 5,250 square feet, there will be other areas of square footage for similar seating in other locations to fulfill that requirement?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. So go ahead and call for public testimony. No, go ahead, Commissioner?
It gets very hot here in the summer, will any of that area be covered?
We'll probably have some umbrellas out there. Umbrellas at the tables.
Would you, will this come back before us for approval on the design element of this?
The way that you had suggested it before would be an administrative approval. And I had agreed earlier that we will bring that to you at the point of my, or whosoever the director at that point in time, the administrative approval. And unlike other administrative approvals, where we simply notify you through email, this will be at one of your standard meetings, but during director comments, so that you know that we have seen something that we are agreeing to, and give you the opportunity, if you disagree with us at that point in time, to basically appeal it, to order that it come back in front of the full commission. If you are concerned with having permanent shade structures, you may want to advise them now, so that they don't have the situation where staff may agree based upon what we've seen, and then bring it to you, and you say no, because we want permanent shade.
Well, then I'd like to, Mr. Underwood? Where did you say you live?
Laguna Niguel.
Okay, Laguna Niguel, I mean, I think you have to use your air conditioning as much as we do here. Seriously, from, I would say, from at least April through September, it's hot. And to enjoy our shopping experience, water, green shade makes a big difference. I would like to ask maybe some shade sales, some permanent shade sale-type fixtures. I'm not an architect, but I appreciate what Commissioner Folsom said, I agree. More than umbrellas, maybe if we can look at that, I don't know if even you would consider in the middle of that some kind of water feature, just for the ambiance of the cool. I think we mentioned that when I met with you back in October, that would be nice to have. Just from the female's point of view of shopping, I think we shop a little different than men do. So you want people to go there and to use it. And across the way, in the Ralph's Shopping Center, it's not seasonally pleasant in the summertime to even hang out there, some of the little restaurants that have it out in front. So I would like to see this, since this is a regional shopping center, if possible, maybe to provide some kind of permanent shades, shade sales, something like that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I respond?
Sure, go ahead.
What we've also got planned, if I can expand on my previous answer, is a specimen tree at the center of the plaza that would be like a specimen palm tree, like a canary palm, or a specimen oak tree, or something that would grow out with a very large canopy. And then we could provide other landscape around the plaza, other types of trees around the plaza as well, if that would be something that the commission would consider in lieu of structural shade type.
Sale, what do we call them, sale shades?
Yeah.
Are quasi-temporary, quasi-permanent, because they don't last that long. The problem with specimen trees is that the growth rate on them is five to 10 years before they do give that canopy. So that's the, I understand what you're saying, it's going to canopy it, but it will take quite a while. So perhaps we could put something as a stopgap measure in between. Typical sale cloth cover only lasts a couple of years, so. Just come up with something.
Okay.
Okay.
But thank you for addressing this, and doing what we've asked you to do. You've come back with a much better project.
Thank you.
Commissioner Folsom?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, that I think that a lot of these folks here are going to be, you know, potentially walking to this development. And if there's, if it's in the middle of the summer, they're not going to, you know, it's kind of a waste to have benches and seats or whatever there, and it's too hot to sit there, so.
Do we have another comment, Earl?
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate what Commissioner Sobek said. Having spent nine and a half years here in the summertime, and particularly in that area, which is treeless, umbrellas is just not going to cut it. I'm in that group of people they call seniors, and we are very, very sensitive to excess heat and sunlight. So if you could put something up there that will multitask, so to speak, take care of the sun and the rain, and I think that would be greatly appreciated and supported by the community. So if you could take a look at that, I would really, really like to see a more permanent structure there. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions of Commissioners? No? So take public comment, public speakers now?
Yes, sir, you do have public commenters. I will just start from the beginning of how they were submitted to me, Mr. Ron Sullivan?
Yes, for the record, Ron Sullivan, I live at 28068 Orange Grove Avenue, which is in the Palmaia Track. I'm just here to speak in favor of this development. I particularly like the hotel, because I think that we need one here, and it's a perfect location. Also, the fitness center, at least on that side of the freeway. I know we have a couple of fitness centers on the other, but everybody that lives over there, other than a couple of HOAs that have their own fitness center, for the rest of us that are not in a large HOA that have some of those amenities, this fitness center is going to be terrific. This has been a long time coming, and I'm looking forward to, hopefully, the commission can pass this tonight. I think staff's done an excellent job in what they've done here. And I'm looking forward for them to move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Kason Klein?
Good evening. Originally, I was coming to planning commission tonight to announce the groundbreaking of Commerce Point. So I'm here kind of to share the unique perspective that I have, both serving as a plan, having served as a planning commissioner, and chairman of planning commission, City Marietta, from 2002 to 2005, and now as a development representative. I received an email earlier today that, from a commissioner, a city commissioner, and it says, it's basically rallying the troops. And it says, "The planning commission has a responsibility of making sure any development for the city is for the citizens and not the developers." So as you folks know, minus the two new commissioners, I've been here from the beginning. And so I wanted to share with you some things that have been on my mind for many years. My opinion. The planning commission is a quasi-judicial body, which means you are going to base your findings on fact, and the rule of law is the development code, and your general plan. Regardless if there's 500 people out here objecting to a project, if it meets your development code and your general plan, it's your responsibility to pass that project. Developers own land, and we have rights as well. This is America. So when I hear, when I hear a planning commissioner tell a developer the third or fourth go-around to come up with something, Commissioner Thomas, that's what you just told him, about this outdoor seating area, that Commissioner Sobek, you told these guys back in October to come up with something, and this is what they came back with. And here we are again, designing from the dais, come up with something, talking about, "It's hot here." I guarantee you, covered patio there in the summertime, nobody's going to sit there, covered or not. I mean, that's the bottom line. We are professionals, it's our land, we know what we're doing, it meets your development code. Pass it. And I don't mean to focus in on this project, this is meant to be more overall. Menifee is moving forward, there are a lot of good things going on. And what happens here speaks volumes to development, and it's discouraging. So I can go through a number of things here.
Thank you.
I would just, thank you. I would just say to you, not one person, not one body is bigger than the process, and I would encourage you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
And one clarification for the record, the email referred to did not come from a planning commissioner.
Next speaker?
Yes, sir. A.J. Novak? Good evening. As we begin 2015, I believe this commission should be setting standards for a city of beauty, not one known for just fast food restaurants, gas stations, and traffic nightmares, as is the current plan. I'd like you to consider the beauty of Temecula's Pond Park, and think, "Why not us?" You could see your place in history by creating a walking Menifee, full of unique and interesting shops, markets, and quality restaurants. Again, my neighbors and I would like to ask to see the master plan, not the general plan, as I was told by Commissioner that you do have one, and would like to see a master plan and understand how to get the master plan, because we're not clear about that. So if there is a master plan, as I was told last time I spoke, could we find out how to get a copy? Thank you very much. Can we ask Charles?
Grant Yoderz?
Good evening, Grant Yoderz, Community of Sun City. I'd just like briefly just talk about our two newly seated planning commissioners, and also what Mr. Leclerc said. It's my opinion that you folks are more than welcome to engage and participate in any discussion. I also strongly believe that both of you should abstain from voting on this project. And I say this because even though Mr. Folsom may have looked at the CDs or whatever, it would have been more advantageous if you would be here at the meetings that have been conducted over the last couple of months, and also at the workshops, to listen to personally from the applicants, and also from those folks that stood up there and voiced their opinions for and against. So I would encourage the chair to ask that both new commissioners abstain.
Katie Manier?
I was going to also say the same thing Mr. Yoderz said, that I think you should abstain. Then I have a question. I understand, Mr. Folsom, you work for EDA. I find that to be a conflict of interest, when you're sitting on this seat and you are involved with redevelopment, or the development, economic development. I think that's a conflict. I think if you've lived here a year, I couldn't find anything that indicated you're a homeowner either, just like our mayor, I guess. But where have you gentlemen been? You've lived here since 2001, you've never been to a meeting, a planning commission meeting, a city council meeting. Why would you pick up that little rag, Menifee 24/7, and go, "Gosh, there's an application, I think I'll apply"? I mean, I'm here every meeting, I have been here every meeting for five years. I think I've missed one meeting, planning commission, city council meetings. I've been here five years, talking, talking to deaf ears, talking to people that don't care that there are people sick in this city from building on toxic sludge. Go home and look that up on your computers tonight and see what toxic sludge is. See what they've done to this city, look up the articles, and if you need any, I can send you lots of them. And people here don't believe that there's anything wrong with it. In Chris Thomas's neighborhood, what, there's 14 houses? You have 11 people in your neighborhood that have cancer. 11 people in 14 homes. Don't shake your head no, because that is true. That is true. So we need to take a look at what's going on in this city and where we're building and what and what we're doing and what we're subjecting people to. And I've said it over and over and over, and I will be here saying it over and over and over, until the day I can come to this microphone and say, I am moving. I'm getting the hell out of this city while I still have my health and I can enjoy the rest of my life.
Martin Gelband. I'm sorry. We understand. Don't worry, Mr. Gelband. Martin Gelband, G-E-L-B-A-N-D.
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity of speaking. I hadn't planned on it. It's interesting that I haven't heard any mention about a traffic report. Now, maybe that occurred in October or November. But if any of you have observed the traffic on that corner, it is short of hysterical most of the day. The folks coming in from the east on the Domengini down Newport, their anxiety to get into Menifee and on the new three-lane in each direction, 215, is amazing. Now, we have a traffic engineer who, if one of those pads is decided upon to be given to a store like Trader Joe's, there will be traffic gridlock in this city like no other city experiences, including the Winchester in Temecula. So I would like to hear something about traffic, the realization of congestion, and the fact, as the commissioner said, nobody's going to sit out there in the summer, even if it was air-conditioned, getting to it, they would fry on the way. So please, mention something about traffic. Thank you.
Can I do that now?
Yeah, go ahead. Don't talk to him. Just talk, ask.
Thank you, Martin. I would like to ask our city engineer if he'd like to take a few minutes and talk about the traffic and...
Is it appropriate to do that?
Is that okay?
It's the commissioner's choice.
Sure. Your pleasure. Yeah. Great, great comment. An extensive traffic analysis was done for the shopping center, which highlighted the
improvements that were necessary to mitigate the traffic impacts that this project would bring. Also, I'd like to point out that this project is working in partnership with the city on the Newport interchange project. They are dedicating the necessary right-of-way to add additional lanes that we're going to be constructing with the interchange that will go into the next phase of construction in the next month. We have a contractor ready to go, and this project plays a very important part in making sure that we stay on schedule. But with that said, this project will be installing two new traffic signals on Antelope, adding additional width that will provide safe, a safer traffic circulation in this area. Currently, traffic has free flow through this area and tends to drive pretty quickly on Antelope. So we are looking forward to these improvements coming in place, so we can take care of the traffic issues that exist out there that everyone recognizes and has spoken to tonight.
Included in that will be an additional turn lane off of Antelope to the freeway, correct?
That's correct. There will be...
Projects giving up land to do that.
There will be two turn lanes.
And is there, in the middle of Antelope, going to be some barriers, mediums, so that the cars aren't going to be able to make those UEs?
Correct. There's going to be a raised median in Antelope that will prevent traffic from just coming out of the one driveway that we spoke about that will have a stop sign. It'll be a right-in and right-out only. So it will, that will help traffic flow as well.
Thank you. Next speaker?
That is the end of the speakers that have turned in a slip on this item. Unless others come forward, that is all I have.
Do we have any other speakers that have not submitted a speaker?
I turned in a slip.
Okay. He says there's another slip.
And I went to sleep. Matt, I'm going to try Orzek.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Matt Orzek, and I've been a resident of Menifee since 2005. And I wasn't planning on speaking tonight at all, but I happen to be familiar somewhat with this project and know that these developers have been trying to get plans approved for quite some time. And I've been here previously when they didn't have any anchor tenants. And I don't think the commission or the city, the people here, understand what it's like to actually bring tenants and people that will pay taxes, that will help build our city and improve our city, the difficulty that these people go through to do that. And when we're going to throw in, I understand cover and shade and all those things, but I agree, Menifee Marketplace has some shade areas and some seating areas, but there's no one there in June, July, and August. There's a beautiful fireplace over there by Bear Hunter. There's nobody out there in June, July, and August because it's hotter than the heat. So to really put that burden on somebody who's been here several times, many times, seems to be somewhat ridiculous at this point. This project seems to fit an LA fitness center. I agree. We'd love to have a good, larger public fitness center in this area. We need more stuff on the east side of the freeway to reduce the congestion on the west side of the freeway. This project, I think, is a very good project for the city. It'll bring in nice tax revenue. I think they've cooperated with the city to the best of their ability, to the highway commission, everyone else involved, to make access ingress and ingress and reduce the traffic flow. I encourage you to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
No.
No. Yes?
I didn't turn a paper. Can I speak?
Yes, you may.
And just after you're done speaking, turn a paper in for the record.
Thank you. And please state your name clearly so I can get it for the record.
I wasn't planning on speaking.
What's your name?
I'm sorry. Edward Germo.
Edward...
Germo, G-E-R-M-O. And I am, I live here in Menifee, and I disagree with both those gentlemen. I use the shade area over here off of Han Road and would appreciate a shade area. And I think from what this gentleman said, that he doesn't care about any of us citizens? If there's 500 citizens here, you're not supposed to listen to us? That's, no, this is our city, not his. And you guys are doing a good job, I think, of listening to us, as citizens. And shade does make a difference. When it's 107 degrees out, shade makes a difference, and people will use it. And I'm not a developer. I'm just a humble citizen of Menifee. And that's all I got to say about that.
Thank you. Is that it now?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Roy Dursen. I can't say it. Thank you.
Roy...
Can you spell it? D-U-E-R-K-S-E-N. Pronounced like D-I-R.
Dursen, okay.
I live in Menifee Oasis. Traffic is a big problem. Ever since the, I don't know how you pronounce it, Dimogini Parkway merges with Newport. It's one of the worst. I lived in San Diego for 45 years, and I can't name an intersection worse than this one. I've been here 10 years, and the one comment is, the Holland Road Bridge, I understand is going to be like Overland in Temecula, no on-ramps. I don't understand that. That is the stupidest thing I ever heard of. You've got the school that's expanding over there. If you had on-ramps, they would take the Holland Road to get on 215 north or south. They don't have to be a cloverleaf. Even what we have now, they could just be an on-ramp. I don't know if Caltrans is the one that controls that completely. I don't know if the city of Menifee has any pull with Caltrans, but that's shortsighted because later, when you have to build it, it'll probably cost more. And I don't understand it. It doesn't make common sense to me at all.
Maybe Jonathan can do, if you're done speaking, sir, are you done? We'll go ahead and address that if you're done. Thank you. Jonathan, could you make a quick comment of right-of-ways and things like that?
Sure. Excuse me. Caltrans does have a say on the spacing of the interchanges. Because of Newport and Scott, an interchange at Holland does not meet their standard. So we are limited to an overpass, which will definitely provide relief to the Newport corridor. And so with the improvements of Newport and the Scott interchange, we believe that'll be sufficient.
Public comments?
No.
Okay. Thank you. So at this point, we can close the public hearing, okay? And whatever the official time is, 8:23? And we'll go ahead and turn it over to the dais for commissioner comments. Why don't we start with two of our newest here, if you have any comments, commissioner?
I heard the comment about designing from the dais, and I agree with that, that our job is to approve or disapprove things that meet or don't meet our standards. I think certain items like shade, I think if you're going to run a business and the people want shade, the business will give people shade, and that would be my hope. If your company sells a product and they want a second product, they go out and get it. And that would seem to be a supply and demand type issue if the adjoining businesses seem to see that there's nobody milling about because it's too hot. Well, there's going to be shade there very, very quickly. And I would hope that the businesses modern are smart enough to understand that. I am going to abstain from the vote tonight at the suggestion of staff and council. I don't think it's appropriate, since I'm abstaining, to indicate which way I would vote on this project. So, but just addressing the, it appears that the traffic issues have been dealt with sufficiently. Thank you for that report. And the interior design issues, I would, my only comment would be, I asked the question at the beginning about the parking space sizes. My only hope for this community, where there be some larger spaces. Everybody's got SUVs. Everybody's got pickup trucks. I don't know if that makes me the parking space czar of the town, but I noticed the stalls are all nine foot wide, and I'm sure that's to code, which in a standard Ford F-150 gives you about a foot and three inches to get out of your car, not including the mirror. And if you look around at the vehicles being driven by people in this town, there are predominantly large population of pickup trucks, SUVs, things of that nature. Used to be minivans. We don't see those anymore. So I, if you can calculate to make the spaces larger without losing the amount of spaces you need, hey, that's on you. You can re-stripe how you want to. I'm not looking to change the number of spaces required. I'm just going to put that out there, that my personal feeling, I'm 6'4", 260 pounds, getting out of my wife's SUV is nearly impossible if somebody parked in the next space. So if you can do that, that's going to be my one comment.
Commissioner Folsom?
Obviously, there's a lot of concern about this project from a lot of the residents here, and I understand, and I've heard the concerns. I was not here for those previous meetings, but I did hear speaker after speaker talk about that this was not something that was going to be attractive to them. However, I do see that for the city overall, the city is a growing city. The city needs new retail. The city needs new revenues. We need projects like this in order to keep the city growing. My concern, as I pointed out for some of the things, making sure that the, you know, we're properly parked, that you've got enough parking in the different areas, that it's safe, that the traffic circulation works. A little concerned about some of the throttling things, but you guys have gone all through So I'm generally in favor of this project.
Mr. Sobek?
Recently, I attended California Environmental Leadership Academy. And in that leadership academy, as commissioners, we were given guidance and taught how to be better commissioners. And the three things that we were encouraged to look at over and over and over was, when a development project comes before us, we need to look at the economy, we need to look at the environment, and we need to look how it affects the community. And those are the ways that I make my decisions. Thank you.
I would just like to expand on what Commissioner Sobek said. I also attended meetings, and I kind of disagree with the comment that we are regulating developers. I would rather say that we are keeping them focused on what the city's general plan is, as well as what the city's vision is. We have experienced in Menifee what I would plagiarize and say, deadbeat developers, who promised one thing and then developed in an entirely different vein. We are charged with land use decisions here in the planning commission. And it is our duty, not only to pursue due diligence in ensuring that the projects meet the scope and intent of our general plan, but to hold those people who would like to come in here to develop to a certain standard. One of the things that I always like to say is, our city, our rules. And therefore, we serve not only the development community, but the citizens who have to live here day in and day out, who would like to avail themselves of quality development. And so as a commissioner, I'm not looking at swaying myself to the whims of a developer who may or may not live here, but who is content with coming in and just dropping stuff on us that we have to live with five or 10 years down the road. And so just to reiterate, my training and background states that I'm not going to just listen to such cliches as, well, it's market-driven, or this is how we've always done it. That's not going to happen, as far as I'm concerned, while I'm here. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and do my comments, and then we'll take a vote. First of all, I want to thank the, Mr. Maramontes and Larry Markham and all the others over the meetings that we've been involved in. I have, if anyone knows me, I am not the easiest guy to live with on this planning commission, and I've required a lot of them, and they've made the changes and improved this project, and I thank you for that. We always, as planning commissioners, have to balance property owner rights with our requirements as planning commissioners. So there is a balance that we have to meet there. Just so the commission knows, I had, well, they've been, the ones that have been here have been through the meetings, but the new ones as well. There were several changes in the last round that we required of them, and the first was the moving of the LA Fitness, so they've done that. Parking design standards, I didn't have a problem with. The LA, let's bring this up right now, the LA Fitness Tower, the back of it, as far as the drawings that were submitted, it was still blank in the back. I'd like to make a motion that, as far as the requirement that that be completed completely around. So I don't know. I know he mentioned he was willing to do that, but we need to enter it into the official record?
As part of your motion, that can be noted.
Okay. So we'll make that the part of the motion.
Okay, so we'll make that the part of the motion. Is the applicant okay with that? Okay, so complete, complete the round on the LA Fitness. Because if you're, okay. Yeah, I'll go ahead and bring it up. He brought it up now. So is the applicant okay with the architectural improvements, the shaded structures on the seating area? Okay, so we'll make that part of the record. Let's talk about the outdoor seating. The developer did step up to it in the meeting I had with them right before this meeting. They came up with these drawings and architectural improvements requiring the seating area. They were hesitant in last meetings, but they designed some nice features. They came up with it this time, so I thank them for that. And I think that will be a nice addition, making this a walkable, community-friendly development. And those will be approved by the, at least seen by the commission before they're done. Just so they know, do we need to bring up the pylon signs? So that wasn't discussed technically yet, as far as the location of moving them? The one pylon sign is going to be moved farther north up on the 215?
If you, if you feel it's, they have agreed to move it so that it's basically adjacent to the new LA Fitness. You can include it in your motion or just in this record?
It's already in the record, right? I mean, it's already part, okay. So I just wanted the commission to know that there was a pylon sign that was farther south, and they wanted to move it completely up to the very top north of the property. And we did not want the residents to have to look at another sign. So we had them move it generally behind the hotel, I think was the agreed spot. So you will not be looking at the sign, just so you know, they agreed to that as well. Let's see, what else? Did you want to discuss the hotel?
I know that Charles mentioned that the hotel design will come back before us, and I'm glad for that. I'd like to again mention, I know it's 45 feet, but I'd like to ask that it be a three-story hotel of quality use, just like the hotels, the other hotels that are all along the freeway and some of the pictures that we saw in Marietta and Temecula. We have a couple other three-story buildings on this side of the freeway. I believe that those residents that live in the one-story homes, that would be more, a little bit of a lower hotel, would be better for that area.
So did you want to require that or as a suggestion? Because right now, we have a requirement that it comes back to us before anything's done. What would you like to do?
What, could I get suggestion from staff?
As I've commented before, the architecture and therefore the physical structure of two, three, or four floors will come back to you for review. I discourage you at this point in time to attempt to create a specific standard or requirement for a limitation on those floors, because your role is to review the architecture of it, not to determine whether or not those three floors or four floors, simply as floors, would or would not be acceptable. And why I say that is, the architecture of the building is something that you can comment on for the benefit of the community. But if you can have a structure that's designed in such a fashion that's complementary to the community and of benefit to the community, that structure could be four floors high, or it could be three floors high. Depends upon the architecture that is proposed. And since that's your primary review issue, I suggest you wait until they submit the architecture of that future hotel, and then make your decisions based upon those facts.
There is a requirement here that it's not an administrative approval, it's a planning commission approval.
So you know our desire. So we'll leave it and take Charles' suggestion when it comes back before us. Thank you.
Let's see, what's my other notes here? Traffic flow, I hear a lot, that's a huge issue with the citizens. It is for me, too. I've lived here 18 years. Used to be able to get across Scott Road in 10 minutes. That's not the case now. However, I do know as a citizen as well, though, that when the improvements come in, and they're starting on Newport, on Scott, and Holland, you will see a drastic difference in traffic. That's why we're spending millions and millions of dollars on it. So I'm not saying that to put anyone off, but it is a reality we need to deal with, that we cannot look at the moment, we need to look at what the improvements will do. So I just want, the public sentiments have been heard, is what I'm saying. So did you have a comment, Jonathan? I saw you. Okay. Okay, did you need to leave? Did you need to, no?
No. I was simply trying through sign language to get the city engineer to turn his mic so he speaks into it, so that we don't have the same feedback problems we were having before.
Okay, okay. The other thing is to remember, this was designed and approved as a regional shopping center. So while we tend to look at it as our shopping center for just these homes over here, it really is for the city and the region as well. That's why there are certain improvements going in. I have listened over and over seniors' concerns, and believe me, they literally keep us awake at night because you are one of the most vocal groups out here. And we do take it very seriously. When you sit on this deas, you have to balance things, though. So, did you have a comment? You were going to say something?
You know, I did remember one thing. He mentioned that the Fitness 19 representative was here. And I did want to ask a question of Fitness 19, because, or, excuse me, LA Fitness, excuse me, sorry. Sorry. LA Fitness, I went on the website and tried to call them and ask a question. So if somebody's here, I'd like to ask a question.
And what was your name, sir?
My name is Greg George, and I am VP of Real Estate for LA Fitness. I do the site selection process in real estate.
I just, at our, did you find out anything at our, I believe is at our last planning commission meeting? We asked about Silver Sneakers program.
Yes, we do, we do have that Silver Sneakers program.
You do?
That's been incorporated into our operations.
Great. Thank you. That was one of my questions that I had forgotten to ask. Thank you.
Okay, so clarify, Silver Sneakers is available there. We put this developer through a lot of iterations, a lot of meetings. I'm sure he wasn't really liking us at times. So the reason I did that was, we have come up with a higher-quality product. It will draw, in my opinion, a higher-quality store, which, you have to have a quality project to draw a higher-quality store. Otherwise, you're going to get nothing but 99 cent stores. So we believe that we've accomplished that. And that's, I appreciate them for going through what we put them through. Traffic will be better. Just to clarify, the Holland Road, Jonathan spoke to that. There is no room for on-and-offs right there at Holland Road. So, and if you've ever traveled overland, I use overland quite a bit in Temecula. It is a nice respite from going over the regular overpasses. The traffic lights on Antelope will reduce, if not eliminate, almost entirely the U-turners. And I have to admit, from a repentant U-turner on Antelope, the ones that come north on Antelope, and we can't get through four light turns, and I'll go up there to your Pamela and turn around. So that won't be possible, or it will be extremely slowed down and demotivating when trying it with those two lights there, just so you know. And the other thing is, we tried to design this so that it is walking-friendly. And I think with the seating area requirement and other features that we'll have, it will do that. We, it wasn't mentioned, but now, it was in prior meetings. There's a very nice corner monument that's going to go on the corner of Newport and Antelope. You can look in the drawings that are available. Do we have one? Can you pop that up at all, Russell? I don't know if it's available on your system or not. There, yeah, back, 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 back. There you go. That is what will be on the corner. We did require that of them. It's going to cover basically, you can't see the gas station or the drive-through, whatever's there. So that's a nice addition there. So there's a lot of these amenities that have increased the value of the shopping center to make it valuable and draw a good tenant. So for these reasons, I am supporting this tonight. So any other commissioner comments? Any comments from staff?
No, sir.
Should we go ahead and take a vote? Would the commission like to take a vote?
Off a motion, a motion, a second, and then a vote.
Do we have anyone who would like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for voting.
You can't?
No.
I'd like to, though.
You'd like to? Oh, okay, okay. We'll have comedy hour at the end. That's good, so, but thank you.
I would like to move that we go ahead and adopt the resolutions that were presented pertaining to this project.
As in regards to Resolution 15-198, 15-196, 15-197, 15-195?
Yes.
As modified?
As modified, yes.
I second.
Should we clarify what as modified is?
No, we have a record of that.
Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and take a roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Folsom?
Yes.
Commissioner Sobek?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips, I'm out of order here, sorry. Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
And Chair Thomas?
Yes.
And I will note that Commissioner Carwin is recusing on this vote.
Correct.
Did we just vote on all at once, or are we doing the individual?
We voted on all at once.
Mr. Leclerc said we could do a slate on this, so.
Okay, good.
And also, so that it's clear, these are recommendations to the city council. This now goes to the city council for them to have a public hearing and an ultimate decision.
Just a technical question, why would this go to council when others, we are the final body?
Because this involves a specific plan amendment and multiple applications that are tied to that specific plan amendment. And a specific plan is an ordinance, and only the council can modify an ordinance.
Okay.
And its own chain.
Okay. We'll move on to item, what number is this, 11?
10.
10, 10.2, the Menifee Union School District Education Center. Mr. Carwin, we want to hear your voice on this one.
I have examined the plans, I've looked it all over. It's a beautiful-looking building, I'm very impressed with it. And I think it's an excellent use of the property.
We'll go through the process, and we'll hear from you. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner can, both commissioners can participate on this because it has not been, yes, they may both participate on this because this has not been before the commission before. And he received, both commissioners received the exact same packet, and we received the same testimony as the other commissioners, so he can participate fully in this process.
Okay.
And with that, staff, we'll turn it over to Ryan Fowler, who is the staff that will present this staff, this report.
Ryan Fowler, here to present the Menifee Union School District, District Education Center. This is plot plan number 2014-146. The subject site is directly behind me to the south of City Hall here, within the yellow highlighted area on the map. It is off of Han Road, just north of Newport Road. Our project site is within the area labeled with 2. It's specific plan number 248, it's the Newport Hub specific plan. It's planning area 2, which is designated for office. To the east and south of the site is both retail, commercial, also within that specific plan. To the north is planning area 3, it's light industrial. Also to the west is planning area 4, light industrial. Within the subject site is vacant land. To the north is, you can see above the yellow highlighted area, that is property also owned by the school district. It is vacant land right now. On the opposite side of Han Road, to the north of the project, is more vacant land and also City Hall. To the east is vacant land in the multi-tenant medical office buildings. To the south is vacant land, and to the west are some multi-tenant industrial office buildings. And that includes the His Light Office, church offices, financial offices, the City of Menifee Maintenance Facilities, and the Cavalry Hills Church. Plot plan number 2014-146 proposes a two-story, 44,932-square-foot concrete tilt-up office building. It's for the Menifee Union School District to serve as their district education center. So within the office is included some office spaces, conference rooms, boardrooms, restroom, staff lounge, training room, lobby, and an enclosed patio. The project has 177 parking spaces, and includes, which includes, 6 ADA-accessible spaces. And the project site is on 6.1 acres. This is an illustration of the site plan. And the blue is obviously the building. All of the green is the landscaped and open space areas. Here are the proposed sample elevations. This is the north and east view. So on the top, the top illustration will be that portion of the building that will be facing City Hall. The bottom portion will be that which faces the 215 on the east side of the building. This is the south and west elevation. So the top version, or the top illustration will be facing Newport Road, while the bottom will be facing away from the freeway. I have four perspective illustrations here. This first one is of the main entry to the District Education Building. And this will be pointing southeast towards the corner of New Hub Drive and Han Road. Here, we're looking at, towards the freeway, the freeway would be in the background here. So we're looking at the west side of the building. And here, we have more of a close-up of the employee patio area, the employee break area. And here, we have the northeast corner of the building. There'll be one monument sign, one monument site is proposed. That'll be on the southeast corner of the property, be where Han meets New Hub Drive. So the staff would like to bring up four further planning considerations. First is the future development of the property. Currently, right now, there's two basins. Under the current plan, there's two basins. They're located on the north side of the development, all within the school district's property. These have, these two basins have the potential, in the future, to be removed or reduced when that vacant area is developed.
Can we stop there real quick? Do those extend into, out of their, out of their lot line? It looks like it goes beyond their lot line.
There is a parcel merger in process right now that will merge the entire, you know, we call it like a donut hole, this whole area encompassed by the streets into one lot.
And do they plan on building additional or put parking there or something? Or it's all still going to be school district, right?
It's all school district, but there's no plan at this point for that future north development.
Okay, so during the parcel merger, you can go ahead, even though it's not complete, you can go ahead and submit plans that extend beyond your own parcel?
Well, no buildings would be able to be built, or a permit would not be issued until that merger occurred, because you could not have a parcel line crossing a building.
Okay.
And so the future development, if it were to eliminate those two basins, or reduce them, as I had mentioned, they would, the future development could incur the cost for removal of those two basins, and possibly the drainage or water quality, infrastructure, rearrangement within the current project boundaries at that time. And the project applicant could construct at this time an alternative bio-retention system. And that alternative system has the potential to eliminate the need for or reduce the size of those two northerly basins, and connect to future development to the north. The future development, that is, within the school district's property. Right now, the additional cost of this alternate system may be a factor in the applicant's decision to move forward with what they have currently, which is the two basins on the north. Also, the time and costs associated with revising the water quality management plan that they had approved, that might also be a factor. So currently, staff is requesting the commission determine which is acceptable. The current design with the two northerly basins, and amending the final water quality plan when that actual development to the north comes into play. Or, second, is to amend the, implement the alternative system with this project, or to show the feasibility of reducing or eliminating those two with an alternate, the two basins with an alternate system. The second planning consideration that we wanted to bring up was consistency with the specific plan architectural guidelines. So the Newport Hub specific plan establishes an architectural theme within this planning area for, of country and/or California ranch. It mentions two themes. And it also requires that they... that they complement surrounding development. And one of the primary goals of the specific, specific plan design guidelines is to establish and ensure a cohesive standard of quality. Um, some of the existing buildings within the Newport Hub area, which, uh, just for information, is generally Salt Creek, two fifteen, Newport, and then the residence, residential development, uh, everything within those borders is the specific plan area. So, some of the, uh, surrounding existing buildings do not necessarily incorporate that country or California Ranch theme, and, uh, just a couple of examples in this area, one is, um, over here to the southwest, um, there's a non-specific industrial tilt-up, um, shell building that was built, um, also, there is the, um, multi-tenant medical offices that are built over on, adjacent to the two fifteen. Um, however, there's also, uh, other buildings, uh, the modern architecture of this particular project may not necessarily complement those, those buildings, those include the architecture of City Hall, Han Professional Building, um, the multi-tenant building south of the post office over here, um, the Rancon, uh, Menifee Dental Group Building, that's there on the corner of Newport and the two fifteen, there's the Yellow Basket, uh, the brand-new Menifee Medical Building, the new, uh, Newport Town Square, and, um, two buildings that haven't been built yet, the Americas Tire and the International Auto Crafters, which have recently come to the planning commission. And here's some illustrations of those architectures that I was mentioning, the top one is the newly-built Menifee Medical Building, and the Americas Tire, which is, um, proposed and in process, uh, but not yet built. So, staff is requesting planning commission's determination regarding the proposed elevations, consistency with SP Design Guidelines, specifically the requirements to ensure the cohesive standards of quality, and whether it complements the surrounding developments. The third point we wanted to bring up was a sign program, this was, um, the applicant, um, has proposed currently, one, uh, monument sign that we showed you earlier, and one wall sign, that will be above the Menifee Unified, or Union School District Boardroom, under this plot plan. So, it was previously understood that the applicant would come in later for that additional wall sign, um, however, they've included it as a part of this plot plan, and provided plans for that wall sign. So, this item was discussed in your staff report, however, has been resolved, um, with some of the wall sign plans, and it's been demonstrated that it was in conformance with the specific plan standards and guidelines. And here is the image of that, um, wall sign that was discussed in your staff report, that's been, you know, we've, we've received plans. Um, one is the close-up on the bottom, it'll be some twelve-inch metal routed, uh, lettering that will stand on top of the canopy. And the top is, just gives you an idea of where it will be located. And then fourth is the consistency with our typical decorative lighting standards, the Riverside County Design Standards and Guidelines, they're third and fifth super, super, basorial districts, uh, specifically read that parking lot lighting fixtures, other than the standard shoebox types, wherever possible, but specifically in parking lots that are viewed from major streets. So, the applicant has contended that the requirement to install these decorative fixtures, um, places an undue economic burden on the project, um, they've also stated that what they have proposed is not, in a technical sense, um, shoebox lighting, so here's, this next slide shows an image of what they're proposing within the parking lot, so I'll just, I won't go too quickly through that, just so you can see what their current proposal is within the parking lot. And then this next slide shows, um, along Newport Road, there's been several projects approved here at the city, um, that incorporate the decorative lighting, and, and these two images, uh, well, the three across the top, um, are all within, along Newport Road, um, one is Arco, and maybe the other one is McDonald's, um, uh, decorative lighting. That map on the bottom shows, uh, projects that have incorporated the decorative lighting, and then also not included on that map is the Arco along Newport Road on Menifee, um, it's under construction now, it will include the decorative lighting, and then two projects within the specific plan area, um, Americas Tire and International Auto Crafters will also, uh, there are conditions of approval to have the decorative lighting. So what staff is requesting is planning commission's interpretation of the appropriateness of the proposed fixtures. This time staff is recommending adoption of Resolution PC fifteen nineteen four, and to adopt, adopting Addendum Two Environmental Impact Report number two six four, and adopt Resolution Number PC fifteen one ninety-three, approving the plot plan, which is subject to the attached conditions of approval, and also I provided you with a memo of those four, um, minor edits to the four conditions of approval, um, that you should have in your packet. That concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Um, do commissioners have any technical questions of staff at this time?
Yes.
I have just one question, uh, as far as the water quality management plan, um, that site tends to slope toward the northwest. Now, uh, with the, the, the basins there, are, are there any kind of facilities for, uh, draining into Paloma Wash? Is there a storm drain system set up to sort of like, direct the flow of that water off of this land, because of the slope? There's a natural slope there, and it's very, very slight, but it's there, and it tends to drain towards, uh, Paloma Wash. I noticed this before when we were looking at, um, whatever that restaurant is over there, um, and I was just wondering, do we have storm drains in that area?
Uh, city engineer is indicating yes, but under this situation, the improved area of this site will be controlled and funneled into appropriate stormwater facilities, so that there will not be a need to go from this site to the Paloma Wash, it's gonna be handled on-site.
Yeah. He's here, and then go into a drainage system.
Right, and that was, when he, he, he mentioned that they were gonna modify it, and I was just wondering about that modification, is that gonna be an adverse impact?
On about the retention ponds?
Right.
On the north of that?
Well, if a project is proposed in the future for that additional land, and if that project proposed, uh, requires that modifications to those facilities be constructed, uh, for that facility, then at that point, they would be modified. Short of that situation, what they're proposing is the basins that you have in front of you today.
Okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner Folsom.
It, there's, so there's an auditorium, and I assume that's where they hold the school board meetings?
That is correct.
Uh, what time are those meetings held?
What the applicant has indicated was that they would be after, uh, office hours, so, a, a specific hour I don't have, but they would be after the offices, offices are closed.
In the evenings, basically, okay, because they are exempting the parking, so, just wanted to clarify.
The board meetings that I've attended have been at four o'clock.
We can let the applicant address that issue.
Go ahead, uh, Commissioner Carwin.
I have a question about the, the basin setup, it, it, the basin requirement, is that there because the adjacent lot is vacant?
No, no, it is not. There are standards and requirements for controlling the water that comes off an improved site, there, for water quality that drains into the ground and into the, the, um, the creek and so forth. They are proposing this as part of the system in order to control the water that comes off of their improved site, it will drain into those basins, be contained in those basins, and eventually dry up, and periodically, those basins will have to be maintained to take various items and, and pollutants and so forth out of it.
So then, when the adjacent property, if merged or not, or whatever, when the adjacent property is developed, that necessity for those basins could be done away with, with, through their design, or would those basins still be necessary?
It depends upon their design, that will determine whether modifications to those basins will be necessary, uh, and if necessary, to what extent.
So the basins are something that would need to be constructed with the development here, and then if further development is made, that would need to be re-designed, redeveloped?
Reevaluated at that point, correct.
Exactly. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Folsom?
Uh, with regard to those, uh, parking lot lights, um, what's proposed, is that anything near what we're requiring of?
Of other development?
Yes.
It's a relative term. That is different, we have to agree that that is different from a shoebox, but it's not as decorative as what this commission is required of other developments within the last twelve months. It, it comes down to a judgment called by the commission.
I, I just had one more, I didn't see a note in here what the total height of this building would be.
I have it on the elevations, so I can look into that right now.
The applicant probably has that off the top of their head as well.
The applicant? Let's see, we'll talk to him in a moment, so hold that quick when he-
I will hold that.
Any other questions of staff? Uh, I just have one question of staff, did the school district come to you with a, um, pre-planning drawing sketch, conceptive conceptual sketch at all, or is this the first time, before they submitted plans?
No, they've worked with staff for quite a while.
Quite a while, okay. I'm just wondering if staff gave them any direction as far as the architecture?
Yes, indeed, staff rendered its opinion to them, and they explained why they chose this particular architecture. We gave them, uh, the opportunity to present it to the commission, as the commission is the authority to make that, uh, approval.
Okay. So if there's no other questions from the commission, uh, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, what time do we have, and is it?
Nine oh five.
Nine oh five, okay.
Just to clarify, Commissioner, it's thirty-eight and a half feet tall.
Thirty-eight and a half feet tall. At the tallest point. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, was this properly noticed, clerk? Like, oh, Madam Clerk, what, which would I call you?
You pretty much can call me anything you like. I am your city clerk, so, uh, yes, this was noticed.
Miss Clerk?
Whatever makes you comfortable, sir. Uh, it was properly noticed, and there is some correspondence that you have, uh, in your, uh, in front of you today, in fact, that came in after the publishing and, uh, after the notice of the hearing, so it recently came in, we did put that in front of you today.
Let's see, oh, is that the Facebook printouts?
I know, that'd be the previous project, that would be the, um-
Oh, okay.
A letter from the-
Saboba.
Saboba Indians.
Oh, okay.
And then a memo from Mister Fowler.
Okay.
So we had spoken about the memo, those are the four, um, changed conditions, and, um, there were, the letter from the Saboba was requesting tribal monitoring and, um, a treatment and disposition agreement, um, that is, was actually already included in the conditions of approval under condition number thirty-six.
Okay, it looks like we have something here about security systems too, that you're, they're, they're gonna install an alternative security system, or something?
We are suggesting that modifications to the condition allow them, if they choose to bring in, an alternative that we will review and determine whether it's acceptable or not.
And the current, though, is, isn't that the cameras everywhere and everything that we went through with Stater Brothers?
Fundamentally, yes.
Fundamentally, yes, okay. And then we have, so Ryan's is clarification on the, uh, conditions, I see this, okay, oh, I see, okay. Do we have any public, uh, let's see, would the applicant like to speak? Is the applicant here? Okay, we'll go ahead and hear from you.
Good evening, everybody. Mister Chairman for the evening, uh, members of the commission, new commissioners, I'm Jim D. Camillo, President of WLC Architects, located in Rancho Cucamonga, California. A couple of quick comments, uh, Charles, Ryan, and the staff have been super to work with, we have actually worked with them for months on this project, the first conversations occurred in June of, uh, this past year, so, it's been a, a while getting to this point, so, um, I have to say, we've signed the conditions of approval with the amendments this morning, or yesterday afternoon, going back and forth between me and Ryan, so, uh, pretty much, we're set with the project as proposed. Couple of comments, going back to the things that were raised by the commission and in the staff report. First, on the WQMP and retention basin, Mister Fowler's a hundred percent correct, we're doing what we're doing because these are public funds building the project, so much like the city would do, you, you, you don't wanna bury a lot of funds under the ground only to have to tear them up later. The, the property behind us is all one parcel, when this project is approved and permits are pulled, this will not be multiple parcels, this will now be one parcel, in fact, it will be one parcel within about a week, so that process is underway. Since we have the luxury of the acreage in the back, the least expensive way to build a retention to meet the new WQMP requirements and state code is to do what we're doing now, not knowing what we're gonna build later, the alternative would be to build underground filtering tanks and everything else, but with public funds, you'd soon see a backhoe out there ripping it all up to do something else, and you can imagine why everybody would come unglued, 'cause the public had paid for the building. So, instead, we're building shallow basins now, because we don't know what, what the school district will propose to build in the future back there, but ultimately, the final resolve will most likely be an underground solution, as you will see more and more with the new green code and WQMP coming into place throughout your city, as is going on all over California, so that's why we're doing what we're doing with the retention basins. Charles is right, basically, it's a system that just retains water and percolates it down back into the aquifer, that will be the standard all over California.
Are they fenced or anything?
No, they're very, very shallow, I mean, they're not deep enough for anything, they're really, I mean, they're, they're, they're basically just shallow, you know? Pool would be the wrong word, because they almost never have water in them, but they're just a very, very shallow basin, so.
Is there any condition of approval for maintaining of them clean, keeping them clean, I know you mentioned something earlier, but is there a-
Yes, that's all required in your WQMP and requirements, which is all, which has just recently been approved as of this past week with the city's own consultant that you hire, and our civil engineer who designs it in conjunction with them. Uh, board meeting times, uh, the, the school district is shifting or, or evolving into an evening board meeting, as the district grows and availability of people to make meetings, their board meeting times will pretty much align with your commission meetings, maybe on a different night of the week, but they're generally in, will be in the evening, and so therefore, the parking lot of the building, being a professional office building, will be pretty much open at the time when, when board meetings are held. Parking lot lights, an interesting one, you have a couple of issues here that are somewhat aesthetic, if you will, in my, uh, the development is not dying on its sword, if you will, over the parking lot lights, we were asked to propose something that wasn't a shoebox, a shoebox is what you call the, the sort of just square rectangle, it looks, it looks like a shoebox, so that, we, we did not propose those. The decorative fixtures are somewhat in the eye of the beholder, these are LED light fixtures, very high efficiency, very low energy consumptive fixtures, they make many different styles and models, if, if it would be the commission's favor, we would be happy to work with staff as, as the permits are, or drawings are being put together, it's not a big issue to the school district, we were trying to pick something that fit in with the architecture of the building. Conceptual sketches and staff recommendations, yes, excellent question, we did meet with the city very, very, very early on in the process, in fact, almost before a line had been drawn, uh, on this design, and were pointed in the direction of, of buildings that surround the donut hole. This is a challenging site, uh, as, as an architect, been practicing in the empire for thirty-two years, this is a, this is a challenging site, 'cause it's an edge condition, in fact, this is not even the edge, this is the center of the donut hole, and around us, we had inventoried all the buildings and their colors and everything else that, that was available as an inventory to look at, so what you have is a transition site, one side has professional office buildings, to the east, towards the freeway, to the south of us will be retail, um, I have to chuckle even, as an architect, I know, no offense is intended, but Yellow Basket is not really relative to a professional office headquarters building, so as an architect, the buildings need to speak to-
They have good onion rings.
They do, I've eaten there, mostly breakfast, Bruce likes to eat early, or meat early in the morning, the, um, so as an architect, you're challenged with trying to pick an architecture in which, in the, in the way- The, so as an architect, you're challenged with trying to pick an architecture in which, in the, in the way that we practice, the buildings speak to each other, they're not battling with each other. There's a, there's a transition going on here at this property. So we have earth tones, we have what's called punched fenestration, no ribbon glazing, all windows proportionate to the windows on the buildings that surround us. We have stacked stone detailing throughout, as you see on Road House and on some of the other buildings that have recently been approved. So with all that put together, we try and assemble a building that talks to its neighbors, but doesn't copy them. And one of the challenges we have is that we're building the only sort of professional headquarters, not multi-tenant building now, this is essentially like a company headquarters in this center. So it wants to have its own identity, not look like the guy next door, or that the guy next door be an adjunct to this building or anything like that. This is, this isn't a shopping center, this is a professional office building. So we think we've developed a center that's, that's appealing, not box-like at all. If you look at the renderings, the building steps down almost to what we call an architectural set of lions' paws that is their boardroom and training center, creating a nice lobby and public feature coming in straight into the Han Professional Center as you come in off of Newport Road. So ultimately, what we've tried to do is build and design a, a transition building that speaks in a, in a polite way to the other buildings around it. There's no red sharks fin screaming at the community to say, here we are. It's a blended building that tries to work with the architecture of the various things that surround, that surround the center. So that's, that's where we landed. One last thing, the school district asked me to say this. Your school district, which you should be very proud of, is leaning forward, if you will. They are trying to provide the very best twenty-first century education to the youth of Menifee. And so as a corporate appeal, in what they're trying to communicate through, you know, buildings, talk to us. California Ranch, maybe not so much. They're, they're looking for a building that, while it's not Getty Center contemporary, but is a building that speaks to the future in the twenty-first century of the education they're delivering with a high-tech education to, to the youth of the community. So a little bit of it is that vocabulary to say, here, you know, we're really reaching forward as a community and providing that next level of, of education to, to the youth in the community. So there's a little bit of vocabulary going on with the building that's speaking to the education they're trying to deliver as well. Last thing, security system. The school district runs a fleet of buildings. Ten times as much square feet as this particular project is. This is just one of many, many, many buildings that they operate in conjunction with the sheriff's department. They have a first-name basis speed dialer with the sheriff's department. So all that condition is, is to say, can we work with the sheriff's department? Can they work with the sheriff's department? To develop a security system that is similar to what they have on all the rest of their facilities that they're very used to working with, and the sheriff's department has them on speed dial. That's all that is, is to say, let's, let's get a security system that they're, that they know how to operate, that the sheriff's department is on, is on a daily basis in communication with the district. That's really what it is, to craft it between the two of those public agencies.
Do you have any questions, did you have a question?
Yes, I had one question, and it's really off the wall. This area, you know, I really like this project, it's one of the most impressive I've seen in a dozen years. One of the features that this location presents, at least to me, is whether or not that certain portions of that facility can be converted for emergency response. Because of its central location, should we have a catastrophic event? Does the school district here have something like that in their plans for allocation of space in case of an emergency like that?
There's two major spaces within the building, and the building is segregated off from a security standpoint because of its public functioning, much like the city hall is. Both the boardroom, which is in the sort of northeast corner of the building, and the training center in the southwest corner of the building are both accessed from a lobby that is lock-offable, secureable, offable from the private offices of the district office. Both of those facilities would serve for emergency operation purposes in the event of a disaster or other such things. And then they're also both open to the public for meetings after hours. There's restrooms available and all, you know, all of that stuff. So the answer is yes. They're not specifically, we also design EOCs at WLC. That's a lot of Cs. The, and, and so, no, there are, the technology is not currently in there to flip a switch and this is the city's EOC. But I would imagine that could be worked out should plans develop. But the spaces are there that would work, as a guy who designs EOCs, perfectly for those sorts of things. Yeah.
I'm just wondering if it's, if you would design this to achieve any type of LEED certification?
The answer is yes and no. For those who don't know, WLC Architects, I'll toot our horn for a second, did the first green building in the United States of America. In fact, we are the only architectural firm in the nation that is listed in the U.S. Green Building Council Study Guide for the LEED exam. We did, the first building was the Southern California Gas Company in Downey, California. So we're, we live and breathe this stuff. For agencies like a school district, there isn't a lot of, they're not selling anything, if you will. So there isn't a lot of benefit in spending the money to get LEED certified. It costs money to get LEED certified out of the US GBC. But the building just in and of itself is bordering on gold. If you were to run it, if you were to run the calculation. It's expensive to do that calculation, do all of that, and it really isn't, in my opinion, a really great use of taxpayer dollars to, to give yourself the trophy, if you will. But as the, one of the authors of LEED, it's bordering on gold. And that is hinging on the potential for fueler, future solar to be added to the project one day.
That brings up a good question. Charles, if they were to do solar, I assume it would be roof-mounted, is?
It is, it is scheduled to be on the roof of the building.
Now, with that, what does that do to height limitations, aesthetics?
Nothing, nothing whatsoever.
Very low profile.
City has, regardless of whether it does or doesn't fit within the height limitations there, under the solar acts in California, they can put up their solar facilities with nothing more than a electrical permit.
But just to let you know, my headquarters building in Rancho Cucamonga is similar in scale to this. I have a almost forty kilowatt array on the roof of the building, you can't see it from anywhere. They're so low-profile, what it's put on the roof. We're not talking those tall tipped things. So this building is pre-wired for it.
Okay. Any other, do you have a question?
I do. Just as a foundation question, is this project fully funded?
Yes.
So, just a-
Look, I'm talking, the guy with the money's over there, yes.
Good. So from this view that's up on the screen, if you look at, I guess it'd be the north, northwest corner of the project there, the plan, there's a, there's a driveway.
Yeah.
And then there's not another exit driveway, all the way down around the corner until essentially the main entrance of the building. Was there an intentional omission of a second driveway on that side?
No, what most cities ask us to do is in working with traffic and planning, to align our driveways as close as possible with the driveways across the street. It keeps you from having that zigzag factor if somebody's trying to get from the office building and cheat over to the one through the middle. So what you'll see is, is that our driveways essentially all align with driveways that are on the opposite or outer side of the donut. So we specifically are avoiding driveways that are terribly close to the corner, because that's not a good thing to have, and driveways that are misaligned with the driveways on the other sides of the donut hole. So, no, you, you don't want too many driveways in and out of an office building like this, but they're very, very specifically planned to be a little bit further away from the corners, because that's dangerous, but specifically aligned with the driveways across the street.
Because I do note on the, the larger, the larger plan, there is another driveway across the street just south of that one, I guess that might be too close.
Yeah, and you end up with, because we're in the donut hole, you end up with so many, you can see through this site, you can see it out there right now, you can see through it. So we're doing everything we can to avoid people cutting the corner, like you see people do at a gas station, basically, when a red light goes. We want, we don't want through views through the property, because there would be an enticing thing. If you notice the driveway in the northeast corner is definitely misaligned with the one in the northwest corner. Originally, they were aligned, and we realized that what was going to happen was everybody was just going to cut the mid-block behind the district education center. So, yeah, it's very, they've been very specifically designed to get the parking count we need, but also to try and dissuade people from cutting corners and using this as a cut-through alley, if you will, since it is in the middle.
And then my final question would be, along with, in, in direct contradiction to my questions on the last plaza regarding shade, I noticed then in the, in the set of drawings, and I don't know which exhibit this is, if it's, if it's on the, the staff exhibit list.
Those are the same renderings that appeared on the slideshow, yeah.
Certainly, I, I think we have, I don't know which number that is on the slide sheet. Okay, that, go forward one more. There we go. This looks like an oven for people having lunch outside in, in the summertime or even early, late spring.
Actually, it's the exact opposite. This is on the north side of the building, and so the district requested that, we do shade studies, part of our LEED training, and so essentially, that whole patio would be in shade ninety percent of the school year, or calendar year. In this case, they asked for us to actually add a roof to it for not only the hot months, but, but the rainy couple of months that we occasionally have. So the patio there is on both floors of the building, and it, and the one on the bottom is in shade most of the year. The one on the top has actually got a rain cover over it so that lunch can be had off of their staff lounge.
So that's actually an out, outside feature with a cover on it up on the second floor? Excellent, thank you, that covers all of my questions.
I do have a question. The trees, there's, is this a, we're not approving landscaping or anything on this, right? Or are we?
In general terms, you're approving the preliminary, yes.
Because, remember we, on the Americas Tire, we were talking about consistency of trees along, are, are these trees, and I'm not a tree guy, so.
The answer is yes, we've gone twice around on landscape review already with the city landscaping.
So what are the tree types that are surround, circum, surrounding this property? The main ones that you're, the big one you show at full growth here?
We, we did take a look at that, what are the surrounding trees. I believe these are London plane trees, and at least on this, on this side of Han Road, there are London plane trees.
Okay.
Yeah, we've, we've actually gone, that's better, right? We've gone two passes, actually, through landscape to do exactly what you're asking about.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, well, on, thank you for explaining about the two basins, because that was, that was one of the staff's concerns on that, and explaining about the cost of public funds. Now I understand more of the architecture twenty-first century, but, and I understand not having it in a California ranch or a country, but I feel like it's, it's on the edge of a little bit too modern in, in, in that area. I mean, it's a beautiful, beautiful building, beautiful site. And I'm looking at this patio, and you, you did bring in some really nice-
I want to save this till Commissioner comments, rather than to technical questions right now, is that okay?
Okay. But thank you for addressing then the decorative lighting. You'll, you'll address that?
Yeah.
And also on the landscaping. I thought this was one of the more quality landscaping projects that we've received, so.
I'll tell the landscape architect.
Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Then we'll go ahead, let's see, where are we? Speakers, public, take public testimony?
No one has signed up to speak, but now someone would like to. Or we can give them the mic, how's that, that works? And repeat your name again.
Thank you, Martin Galban. Question, staff, how many people will be employed in this building? Because I would imagine in the early hours of the traffic in the morning, those medical buildings get a lot of staff in those, and I was just curious, no one mentioned how many people will be in this unified school district headquarters.
Maybe Jonathan can comment on traffic study, on the EIR or something on this?
Well, the traffic study did look at all the, all the possible options for build-out of this area. We did take that into consideration. I don't know the number of employees or people that'll be here at this building.
But the fundamental answer is, the street configuration and the capacity of the street relative to the structures and so forth that are, that would serve or be served by those rights of ways are more than adequate to address the number of employees and visitors to this site, as well as all the surrounding sites.
I would, I would probably agree with you. And the other aspect to the architect, how about a Greek theater where those basins are? Cheap to build, and behind the Sun City Administrative Office, there's a nice Greek theater. They have concerts and readings and ceremonies back there. And it might be a nice touch to camouflage the basin with a nice Greek theater, concrete, outdoor seating in the evening, and just for your consideration. Thank you.
Looks like, is doctor, is doctor Wright?
So I just want to say-
Make sure you fill out a slip, please, sir.
Definitely do so. My name is Dr. Steve Kennedy, I'm the superintendent for the Menifee School District. And I want to, first of all, thank the Planning Commission for allowing us to get even to this point, and to the staff for working with us so closely and diligently. Just know that the quality of the structure is going to be something that we will all be proud of. And another point I wanted to make was that there are, right now, fifty individuals that work in our district office. We're in the process of going through something that's called a unification. And eventually, we will have a kindergarten through twelfth-grade school district, which will include high schools. This facility was designed so that we would be able to grow into it as we develop the high school piece of the curriculum and the, all the needs that we need to do in order to support the students of, of Menifee from age four through age eighteen. It's something that we've long looked forward to, and I think we're right at the precipice of beginning really concerted efforts to, to make that happen. We guarantee that you're going to be, once again, very proud of the facility, and we're going to be very good neighbors for city hall for as long as you're here. I know that there's a plan to, to go across to the other area of the city, but know that this is going to be, I think, a very symbiotic relationship with, between both of our entities. Thank you.
Is there any other public testimony? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at, what is that, nine thirty? I need my glasses. My eyes are getting old. We can open the diocese up to commission discussion, so once you continue, Lisa, with your comments, and then we'll go down the row.
As staffs, one of their concerns was the consistency with the architectural component and with the surrounding area. I, I did hear what you said, that you want it to stand out. I just think maybe a little bit more architectural enhancement, maybe.
Soften it?
Yeah, soften it a little bit. And looking at, what I was going to say was looking at this patio, I noticed on other parts of the building, you, you have the brickwork on some of the pylons. There's one on the first floor there. Maybe even on those pylons on the second floor might give it a little bit of softness, a little bit enhancement. But, but the, the way that you have it situated on the property looks beautiful. It's, I think it's going to say something when you come into the hub. And the one, the one element that probably really kind of gave it that modern, real modern feel that maybe didn't really fit in with the hub were the green windows. So those were just a few of my concerns. Well, I saw, I, I came in the staff and I looked at the window example, and they were green.
Yeah, we have a materials board and it does show green, green glass.
So the green glass, so I, I know that the glass on the adjacent buildings that are, the three-story buildings across from the freeway aren't green. I, I just think that eventually, looking twenty years down the road, it might make it look dated. The Menifee green, the turquoise, is, is way outdated. I know, I've lived here for twenty-five years, and so that's, that was just, but it's a beautiful project. I'm looking forward to this, the Menifee School District being in this area. I just would ask that you come back- I just would ask that you come back, maybe with a little bit of architectural enhancement, a little softening.
Okay, we'll start off this end this time. Commissioner Folsom, do you have any comments? You don't have to have. If you do, you can give them.
Nothing real major, actually. I mean, I really do like the entrance of the building. I think that makes a statement. It's really nice. I think that's a great amenity that you have, that covered outdoor dining area for the employees there. I appreciate that the Menifee School, Unified School District is building in kind of what is the downtown, almost, of Menifee and bringing these jobs to this area. I don't have a lot of other comments about it.
Okay, Earl?
I like the project. I, I think it's, it, it's going to actually introduce this city to the rest of the county, and I'm, I'm really in favor of it, green windows and all.
That's okay.
My only concern was just the amount of runoff, and other than that, I like the building, and I like the provision, I hope, for emergency response. We talked about EOCs. I've seen those in other areas where the school district stepped up and did that. Not being a conspiracy theorist or anything, but I worry from time to time, when my little house shakes, do we have a place to go? So, I appreciate that, and I'm really in favor of this project.
Commissioner Carwin?
Thank you. I'll mirror the comments of the other commissioners. Before it was even appropriate, I commented that I thought the building was really spectacular. I'm in favor of designing up rather than designing down. I'm not a big fan of the design of that David Dialysis Building across the street, and I, I hope that you don't try to match your building to that one. I hope that maybe they scrape theirs and match to yours. My one concern with this project, in looking at the plot, the aerial site plan that was provided, which is, is there's only one way in and out of this development right now, which is, I guess that'd be, is at Han Road, and, you know, you're bordered against the drainage canal there, there's Paloma Wash, and if there were to be some sort of emergency or disaster, getting in and out of this facility for something like that, for that many people, you know, just for example, if the whole, if the whole development in that area was occupied, it's noon, and everybody's there at work, and medical buildings and all that other kind of stuff, how are those people going to get out of there? Likewise, if it's an emergency and that becomes an emergency function site, how is anybody going to get to it? I, I know that there's private development down to the southwest of the site, that's where Jersey Mike's and all that is. I don't know if there's a possibility of an easement to be able to pass through that parking lot to hook up with New Hub Drive at the south, southwest corner of the, the donut. I guess you can't have a corner on a donut, but that's, or, I don't even know if there's possible egress to the north in some way, but I'm very concerned with the more that gets developed. I know fifty employees is not a lot, but if you were to develop the other half of this lot and put more sites there, and then as other vacant lots are built out around that area, there's simply no way in and out if all of those people need to go somewhere at the same time. And then to funnel them all into that interchange, which is a sore spot with citizens, the, the Han Newport interchange right now, if all these people at five o'clock leave at the same time, it's going to take you half an hour to get across the freeway. So, that's, that's my one concern with the project. As, as far as the design goes and the plan goes, I think it's, it's very nice, and my concerns were addressed very well by the, by WLC.
I don't know, Jonathan, if you want to comment on the traffic flow thing?
Well, I don't necessarily think it's a traffic flow issue. There is just one paved road in and out of this specific plan that was designed that way, and it's one of the realities of it. There is, however, because of the physical configuration that exists and the anticipated future development, there will be driveways that will allow for intermixing, give a secondary access out through those driveways. Yes, it may be a little congested, but in an emergency, you have to, you know, have some tolerance of what's going on. And right now, physically, the land's been masqueraded to a point where, with the exception of small vehicles, you can get from where we are to Newport Road without going on Han. So, I, I understand your point, but it wasn't built into the specific plan, it wasn't built into this design. We can make sure that we note it for future projects so that we have paved to make sure that we can have some kind of interconnection, but right now, that's not part of the specific plan, but in the real world, there are ways to get from right where we are now to Newport without going on Han.
Can, may I inquire of staff? Who owns that property that's to the southwest of there?
I don't have the biggest idea.
Doing, is, that's not, that's not public, public land, is it? It's, and the school district doesn't own it, that's a private, private owner? Because I was talking, you know, some sort of easement across that to link up the, the Jersey Mike's Plaza parking lot to New Hub, but that's the only way to connect over there, but...
I think we asked that question a while back. We talked about, we've talked about parking, and I believe that we were told that eventually the Jersey Mike's in that area will be adjacent to the property that's going to be developed.
There's going to be more development that occurs in, in back of that.
Right.
So, again, the specific plan didn't cover, but the realities of development will allow for that access, and as I said, staff can note and make sure that when projects come in, that we arrange for those kind of situations.
Okay, I'll do my comments. I would like to make the, and you've agreed, the, the parking lights to, to go to the other, make that a requirement, because that, that makes a difference to us, anyway. Question, if you mentioned EOC, so does that mean that this building is built to the higher standard? For example, I, the LDS churches I know are built to withstand a higher requirement than code, and they can withstand a higher earthquake, and they're meant to be disaster, I don't know, technically disaster, at least, but that's, essence, what they are. Does this building have additional structural engineering beyond code to qualify it as an EOC?
No.
No?
No, it is not designed, for example, to field act standards, which would be a DSA, Division of State Architect project. It's a design, I have to do that again, it's designed to, or will be designed to your standard building code here in the city of Menifee.
And then...
That doesn't mean it's going to fall over in an earthquake.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just...
Don't watch my client here.
One good shake, it's all gone. I, I, I like the layout. I like that the, the school district's finally getting a worthy offices. My kids go to Santa Rosa, and they go to Paloma, so I like the district, just, just so the public know, I was just reading a report today, Menifee and one other is the only districts that don't have schools that are underperforming and have some kind of, I can't remember, takeover by the state. The only districts that don't have that, so we're doing a good job. However, I'm not really thrilled with the, with the modern taste. No offense, Commissioner Carwin, if you look at the design standards that we're doing in this city, they're all tending towards the Menifee marketplace kind of thing, and that has been public opinion over and over, want to keep the country feel. So, what I would like is to, some kind of softening effects on the architecture. Can we pull up, can I look at your big one here? You guys have that out there. Let's take a look at that. It needs, we need to soften it a little bit. I understand by building up what you mean, the, the big drawing, there you go, there you go, that one. And we've had to do this without, develop other projects, Menifee Lakes, we put it through the wringer to soften up their, their architecture as well. Now, I know you're going towards a modern, but if, for example, look at the Sun City Library. That has a modern, yet a country feel. It has earth tones, it has rock, it has some modern angles to it. It, it has the mix. I, I think you're trying to go for the modern, but soft look here. Are you, is that a correct statement or no? What are you trying to, if you could stand up and talk to it? I'm not an architect, you may need to educate me on what I'm calling it.
Art, a little bit of education for everybody in the room. Architects do not work in these style vocabularies. That, that is not how architects talk to each other.
Okay, how should I talk?
Just the way you started to about where you were going, but don't, labeling things with styles is not really what we're trained at. You know, that's more of a layperson's, no offense, vocabulary for architecture, but if you describe to me what you're, what you're thinking about in the way that you're thinking about it, that's probably better than trying to imprint a style on it.
Okay, well, for example, the top edge of all these buildings, that kind of, and please don't take offense, this is my layman's term.
Yeah, you're okay.
This reminds me of Los Angeles buildings, because it has a hard edge, and it's, it's very modern.
Has an uncorniced parapet.
Yes, that, that needs to be softened. We, we had a Holiday Inn came in, or one, or supposed, or whatever it's going to be, I can't say that. They presented a very modern one like this, and it got shot down. It's just not Menifee. So, I don't expect you to redesign everything, but we can soften it. So, what could we do to soften that top edge? What could we do, maybe some more stone? I know you don't want, we don't want to look like, you know, you don't want to look countryside marketplace, but we, the Dialysis Center, I personally like it. I'm into the country soft look, that maybe is too far for you to go, but more stone, more softening. You guide me, what could be done to soften this? Give me some ideas.
I will work with my client at the, post a vote by the commission.
Say that again, what do you mean?
In other words, I'm going to hear the overall commission's opinion of the building I designed before I negotiate specifically with you as one.
Okay, first, to be clear, I'm not trying to negotiate, I'm trying to understand because what can be done. We try not to be over burdensome to, to applicants, so I'm, personally, I am, commission's open to ideas.
Well, the way that it generally works throughout California, you as a commission suggest to me the things that you would look at, and then we as a, if you come to consensus on that, and then we as a developer designer come back with a proposal. Not here at the meeting, but we come back with a proposal based on your comment. We put our thinking hat on.
Okay, that's fine.
So, that's typically how it works.
So, then, from that perspective, I'm looking at softening the top edge, I'm looking for less of a institutional look, more of a softer look, more of an approachable building. Again, approachable is a subjective term, I understand that, from someone who's in Menifee. Look around, there's a rural element here, there's...
I've been, I've been the school district architect for fifteen years, so, yeah.
So, you understand what I'm saying.
All the, all the schools your kids go to, I designed, yeah.
Yeah, I personally love Santa Rosa. Now, obviously, you're not going to go to the Mission Ranch look, but there's an element there that, that, that tone is what we're looking for. I'm looking for it personally, I can't speak for the commission. Let's take a look here. You've got some stone out front, but soften the edges, a little more, maybe a different colored stone to break it up in different areas. Like she said, the pylasters holding up the poles on the top side on the eating area, more stone on there. Whatever can be done to bring more of the natural element to it is what I'm looking for. And then I'll let the rest of the commission know, because I can only talk for myself as far as this design element. What does the rest of the commission think?
I stated my feelings a little earlier, that I just felt that it needed a little bit of architectural enhancement, a little softening. I kind of agree with, I mean, I like the layout, and, and I like the word that you used, a little less institution, a little less institutional, other than, than that, just a little softening, and looks, so...
It doesn't have to look like that, though. Commissioner, go ahead.
Yes, I personally like the institutional look. One of the things that, with my years and years of working down in San Diego County, people tend to respond to buildings that speak to them with authority. There is a comfort zone, knowing that you're going to go to a place where decisions are made that's not cute. While we have a lot of this contemporary design, people in the United States, at least those that I've associated with, recognize buildings of authority that will say, this is where you need to come in order to get your decisions and your concerns heard and worked on. And for this reason, I am very much inclined to go with the institutional building because of the subliminal messages that it conveys to the general public, that this is not an entertainment venue. This is a place where you can come and get stuff done, and that's my comment on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Folsom?
I'm not entirely convinced either way. I'm not a big fan of the medical buildings that are adjacent to the freeway, for one. There does, does seem to be a little bit of a hodgepodge in this particular area. If this building was located south of Newport, and I'm not sure what that, what the, like, City Hall downtown areas, so, the town center, if it was in that area, I would definitely want to see something a little different. If it was right on the freeway, I might want to see something a little bit different, but I think that I can go either way on that.
Okay, so what it boils down to then is, oh, we're going to talk about, you know, with, you want to, the options are, you can, we could pass it as, today with a condition to come back with architectural improvements, we can pass it as is, or we can, you know, it's, it's up to the commission. So, it's really, what, what, give me some ideas of where you want to go with this.
Well, from my perspective, I don't think that the building that we're in and the surrounding buildings have these softening aspects of it, and I think it would set it apart from this development. I think it would fit in as a development with the buildings that are around here. I, I agree with Commissioner Thomas's comments about the necessity for authoritative-looking buildings, that's why schools, Phillips, I'm sorry, Phillips, I'm looking at you. So, I would propose, I, I would like to pass it as is, that would be, that would be my suggestion on it. I really like the design. Everybody here likes the design with some debate on whether or not it needs to be softened. It would, my suggestion to pass as is, because it would match with the development that it's in, not the development that it's not in.
Okay, one, one comment on that is, you're correct, is there's existing buildings, and, but as we bring new ones in, every building we've put up, we've held them to a higher standard, so we're trying to improve the standard going, but I can understand what you're saying, is you're looking at the current fit of what's here.
I think this element in the front really sets it apart from the buildings along Han, the medical buildings that were mentioned before. That's a, that's a wow factor, and when you come in, I think when you see that, that's where the eye is going to go, and the fact that there's no stonework next to where people are having lunch isn't going to be as obvious. Maybe, you know, they could put ivy over there or something, I don't know, but why would you put ivy on a modern building? Doesn't make any sense. So, but I think that, that element in the front really is what sets it apart, and I think that does create that unique element to it, and I think that fits it in, I, I think it ties the whole thing together.
Commissioner Folsom? Oh, is it, no, was it Charles?
Yeah. At this point, it sounds like someone needs to offer a motion that either approves the structure as proposed, or approves the structure subject to specifically identified alterations, or suggests or offers up a continuance of this item to a specific date certain, with, again, some guidance to the architects so that they can try to modify the building per those guidance, and if there's a second to it, then whatever the vote is for that, the motion, whichever of the three it would be, would pass or fail. If it fails, then an alternative motion could be offered.
So, do we have a motion either way?
I'd like to move that we accept this project as is, as is stated.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
And we assume that means with the decorative lighting addressed in the staff report.
Okay, so, who would...
Can we make an alternative now, or do we wait?
Um, I think we have to take a vote now, don't we? Or can we, she make an alternative?
Can offer an alternative motion, if she gets a second, you'll act on that.
That's, that's the procedural... That's, that's the procedural process. Even though we've already made a motion, do we have, do we have a second? She can make an alternative?
Correct.
Okay.
It'd be a substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
I'd like, I'd, I'd just like to make a substitute motion, um, that they just come back with a few of the architectural enhancements that we've kind of asked for. Just a little softening, um, just to see what, how it can be improved. And, and I'm not saying we're gonna, we're not gonna deny this project, but, uh, I know that two of us feel one way. I don't know how the others, and I just, I would like us to be able to come to a consensus. I'd like to make a separate motion for it to come back.
We understand the motion, there would need to be a second?
I second that.
Okay, then you need to have a vote on that, um, substitute motion?
Correct. Substitute motion gets voted on now.
Okay, before we do that, can we make clear, just for the new commissioners, that what we're voting on is as it is with coming back, continuing is basically what we're saying.
Mm-hmm.
Correct? Okay.
You're continuing, you are continuing it, having given guidance to the architect, some guidance to the architect, uh, as to what you would like to see him come back with. You didn't identify a date specific, but if you vote and it's positive, I'll make a suggestion that you do it in two weeks or four weeks.
Well, can we do a date specific so that it, that gives the message that we're, we still like the project? We wanna...
I would encourage you to have it be a date specific.
Then what is the date specific we would do this to?
My suggestion, the earliest, is the 28th, January 28th.
Is the, is the applicant able to come back at that early?
He's definitely giving...
Okay, shaking, 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 okay. So, you may wanna clarify your substitute motion.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that this come back to date specific for January 28th with, uh, a few modified architectural enhancements.
I make a second?
Okay, you have a motion and a second? Now, you can have the vote.
Counsel, excuse me, Councilmember Fols... Gee, I wonder if I... Commissioner Folsom?
Yes.
Commissioner Sobek?
Yes.
Commissioner Carwin? I'm sorry.
No.
No. Vote on the second, on the substitute motion to continue it to January 28th.
Yes, I'm sure. Substitute motions are always handled first. Commissioner Phillips?
No.
And Chair Thomas?
Yes.
That motion does pass, therefore, the first motion then does not need to be handled.
Correct. This item is continued to January 28th with the instruction that certain modifications be offered up for consideration by the commission to, quote, "soften the appearance of the building," end quote.
Okay, let's see. Next item are discussion items. We don't have anything on there unless, uh, okay. Then number 12, item 12, Community Development Director comments about ethics and Brown Act.
Sorry? Yes. If you would be so kind, is to set a date, preferably at, uh, at your, one of your normal meeting date times and the city attorney's office will provide, uh, guidance and training, um, as required by, for ethics and Brown Act, um, requirements of this body.
Is that for the whole commission or just the new commissioners?
The whole commission.
Isn't there an online one? Well, first of all, how long is this training? Is that four hours?
It, it can range, uh, two to three hours at the most.
Two to three.
I've taken this for the last two years. It's been offered at the California League of Cities.
We prefer to have our new city attorneys provide, because they have specific courses that, that they believe are legally supportable to meet the requirements of state law.
Did, Kathy, did you have a comment?
Only that, um, only that this would also possibly include a very brief hit of the Brown Act requirements and some planning 101 things that might be helpful to the commission as a whole. So, we would be looking at about three hours. The Brown Act training requirement is two hours.
Can we break it up to maybe do a, like a five o'clock before a planning commission meeting or something, if, if all are able to attend? Or is it meant to be in a one sitting?
No, it can be broken up, but due to cost concerns of bringing attorneys in, cause it will be presentations from our attorneys, um, that will give this. So, for cost purposes, we prefer one time.
Okay, so Jen will send a email out and coordinate the dates and things?
Well, if, if we need to, then we'll have Jen, uh, coordinate with you and if it's not a, a regular meeting day, it can be a Saturday. It can be, you know, any day of the week that is preferable to you. So, we'll have Jen email out and you can look at your calendars and get back to us on that.
One thing I found for the new commissioners is you're gonna get occasionally, um, workshops or other special things. If you could maybe email Jen your preferred times, like I don't like Tuesdays at five, I can't, what time you can get here from work, whatever. Uh, like I come from Riverside and I can get here at six and that's pretty much my limit any earlier if I have to, or so. If there's any limitations, it's helpful to know your limitations.
Would it be helpful if I select a date this might work and see if we can get some consensus via email?
Any way that, that you or Jennifer can make it work.
You betcha.
Second item is, uh, unfortunately, I have a few more not listed here. At your next meeting, the second meeting in January is the meeting where you select your officers, being the chair and vice chair. Um, at that meeting, the coun, at that meeting, we are also requesting that since the council has, uh, created a new Menifee Citizens Advisory Committee that will ask that two commissioners sit on that committee as well, I would like to you to think about whether or not you as individuals would like to be nominated and voted by the rest of the commission to sit on that committee. This is simply background information so that you have some idea of what that committee will, will be. In addition to that, we'd like to let you know that the, um, Planning Commission Academy by the League of California Cities will be occurring early March. We have, um, budgeted for you to go. If you would like to go, please, uh, let us know. We'll have Jen, Jen email you out, uh, reminders of that. Excuse me. And we encourage certainly the new commissioners to go, but we have budgeted for all the commissioners if you so desire.
I think we went to that one in Pasadena, didn't we? Wasn't that where that?
Yes.
I liked it, that was good.
We went to the one in Frisco.
And even if you've gone to one before, even if you've gone to one recently, we encourage that you go because there's always different things and it's always valuable, even if you hear some of the same stuff, to reinforce it.
Registration's due on the 3rd of February, so we got a...
Right, you've got a little bit of time, but not a lot. Um, with that, that was all the comments that, um, I had.
Okay, um, do we have any, well, commissioner reports on committee activities? Do we have committee activities?
No, not yet, but you will after this goes into effect.
Okay. Um, also, should be, there's commissioner comments right now, right?
Well, here's the thing.
That sounds like mom, here's the thing.
Commissioner comments were set up to allow, or council member comments were set up to allow comments that fill the AB 1234 requirements, that when you do something with city funds, that you report on them. The general comments you might have, you certainly may make, but generally, you're about, going to comment on what's on the agenda and anything you've attended on city funds that you should report on. Uh, other than that, there's nothing really that you need to comment on unless you wanna ask staff to...
Well, what if we wanna agendize something or what if we want clarification on some project?
Now is fine on that.
Now is fine, okay. So, does the, any of the commissioners have any subjects such as that? Such as you want clarification, you want agenda, agendize something? You want, um, you want some new initiative, whatever? You know, this is the time.
I actually mentioned something to Jen on the phone the other day and, and the reason why, Charles, I, I had emailed you that question cause I started getting emails about the freeway and the, and the grading. Is, is there any way that maybe at our first meeting of the month, we just get in, like in our packet in our notebook, just a little update on the development around town, on how things are going? I mean, I don't wanna make extra work on anyone, but can we get like a bullet...
Well, to the level that we can, you are already included in the material that is provided to the, um, city council and so, um...
You're not receiving the city manager's memos that are very detailed.
How often?
Well, you, you, it's monthly.
Cause I only got, I've gotten one since I've been on...
That should be monthly and you should be receiving them. Please let me follow up on that. That will probably answer exactly what you're looking for.
Correct.
Thank you, cause, yeah, thank you.
First, I'd like to welcome the new commissioners. It'll be a pleasure getting an attorney's perspective and an EDA person's perspective. It, it's an enjoyable job, well, I should say, service. In my opinion, you help design a city and your name will be, go down in history for helping. So, uh, thank you for working on the commission. Anybody else have any other comments? No? Well, then, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All, uh, second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go home.
Actually, you should say, all, anyone opposed.
Anyone opposed, there you go.